Need a second now.
And make motion.
Wait, you make the motion then?
I call for a motion.
Motion to bring the meeting to order.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, all opposed? Motion carried. Alright, just want to make sure with staff, all the notices and everything have been out, done correctly. According to the needed. And remind all the commissioners, if you happen to have had any ex parte communications or any conflicts of interest with any of the applicants, please let us know at the time of the application, just in case. And we'll get everything moving forward. So, the first item is the review and approval of the minutes. We have the January 4th minutes. I think we'll do these just one at a time, just in case.
Commissioner Lyons, um, let me, I think my, it might be my audio that's causing all the weird underwater noises.
Okay.
I'm going to rejoin real quick. I don't know if that breaks everybody else. Alright, I think that seems better.
Alright, can everybody hear us better now?
Yes, louder there.
Okay, great. So we'll do the review and approval of the minutes. We'll do January 4th first. Anybody have any questions, comments, corrections on the January 4th minutes? Make a motion.
I move to approve the minutes from the January 4th, 2022, P T.
Second. And a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Alright, then we have the January 18th special meeting.
Can I interrupt for just one second? This is Rachel, Santiago, Goodyear.
Hello?
Sorry, I'm muted. I'm, uh...
Rachel, go ahead and unmute yourself. I muted everybody.
Okay.
There we go.
I just wanted to, I was just gonna make a note that I didn't think the background noise was coming from you guys. If you are on the meeting and you're not currently speaking, it's always best if you mute yourself. And that's, that's basically what I was gonna say. But thanks for muting everyone, Brian.
Alright, thank you, Rachel. We had a motion?
No.
No?
Not for the special.
No, not for the special, okay. I'm sure we got that. Make a motion for approval of special meeting minutes?
I make a motion that we approve the special meeting minutes of January 18th with no corrections.
Second?
You have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, motion's carried. Alright, we will move now to the preliminary development plan and review. We have one tonight. We have a pre-plan application for 805 South Sampson Trail. Is Willow Pullman here? Or, or Keegan Freelon?
Willow is on. Uh, go ahead and unmute yourself, Willow.
Hello, if you're muted, but star six.
Alright. Willow, you're still muted. You need to press the...
Is there a different mute button for her?
The audio button in the upper right?
I think I found it. Can you hear me now?
There you go.
Yes, now we can hear you.
Okay. I'm Willow. How's everybody doing?
Good.
Good. Um, this is all new to me. Um, but yeah, I'm Willow Pulliam. I'm the one trying to get the permit. Cause we live on 805 Sam, South Sampson Trail and we're running on the county line and the city line. And we need to be able to park our equipment here. Not all of it all the time, but sometimes we really need to be able to, cause we don't have anywhere to put it. We're not gonna be doing anything that's loud. We're making a lot of noise. In the future, we would like to be able to do some mechanicking out of this location. We were thinking of putting a nice, um... Like planters made out of wood out front and putting some nice roses in them. So that when the equipment was parked and it was visible, at least had a better appearance right from the road driving by. Cause we still would like it to be as pretty as possible. We wouldn't be doing anything loud.
What kind of equipment is it?
Well, we run excavation company, so we own like a loader and an excavator and a skid steer. And, so my brother has property. Sometimes we park some stuff there. We would never be storing materials here. It would only be equipment being parked.
Is it, does any fueling be done in the, at this area or any maintenance on the equipment?
Yes. Maintenance on the equipment is done. And we have fuel here to fill it up.
And you're abiding by all the rules and regulations for fueling equipment and that type of thing as far as EPA is concerned and?
I believe so. That is more of a question for Keegan Freelon. He said he went over all that. We got nice tanks and, uh, it built in area for it and everything.
How many vehicles are you talking about?
So, it would vary. Um, we have our personal vehicles, but I would say probably three pieces of equipment and then some trailers. Because like, so in the summertime, for the most part, all our equipment is at jobs. But sometimes it's like Keegan will take a dump load and then he's trying to come home and he's gotta park something here so he doesn't have to drive back to the job site and switch everything out and then drive the regular truck home. You know? And then we do the snow removal in the winter, so we have our skid steers here in the winter and the loader.
And would all the equipment be parked outside?
No, we would not have all our equipment here at once. But, oh, you mean the equipment that we were, did have here parked outside?
Yes.
Um, we would, sometimes it probably would be visible. We would do our best to hide it back behind the shop and park it in ways that aren't obvious. Oh yeah, you're on there now. So you can see we have a shop. So the house is out front and then the shop is in the back. And we would do our best to park behind the shop. But yeah...
Oh, I think she froze. Willow, if you can hear us, I think your connection is frozen.
You're glad she's frozen.
Willow, can you try to reset your connection? If you can hear us, Willow? Keegan, you happen to be online? Well... I suppose we can move to the consent agenda and start that unless we can get her back. If she comes back, we'll jump back into it.
Yeah.
Do we need to pause it formally somehow?
Uh, there's no action to be taken.
Hi, I'm back. Sorry, we don't have internet here, believe it or not. So we use these jet packs from Verizon and they go out a lot.
How far is the equipment from?
Oh, I was just gonna say, sorry, go ahead.
How as far as the equipment from the road?
Um... I don't know. It's like, I don't know the exact feet. Have you driven, dripped past our house over here on Sampson Trail?
I can't, I can't say that I have, but, um, just out of curiosity, I just, how close is it? Give me an approximate distance from the road.
Yeah, I'm trying to think. I'm not good with numbers. I'm gonna say 60 feet. Because we have like a tree line. And the tree line's a ways off the road and we're, everything will be like away past the tree line.
Commissioner Moss, based on a quick aerial measurement, it looks like it's about 80, 85 feet.
5 feet, okay.
Between the front property line and the, or the top, I should say.
Any regulations to that or distance wise? Parking equipment close to the, let me see, 40 feet, there's a few.
Yeah, it depends on the zone and the...
Yeah.
Or be this close enough to give you a solid answer, but there are some regulations?
Yeah, this isn't R1 zoning, so one acre per acre. I do believe that bigger piece is theirs as well, correct? The one to the north is, that yours as well, Willow?
Hmm, trying to understand. So in this, we're just this little piece with just the one place?
But just, okay, so that bigger piece there?
We're on one acre.
Okay, so just that one piece is yours, that other building's not yours?
No. Though, so there's two buildings here by the X. One looks like the house and one looks like maybe our shop. So there are two buildings on our property. We have one acre. And so there's the main house and then like on the other corner of the property is the shop.
The house is there on the south side?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think I see it.
Yeah, the house is on the south side.
Where the numbers come across there.
Yeah.
Yep. Um, so the equipment would be parked kind of like in the tree on the east side of the trees towards the shop. And in the shop. Because that's a good place to park it. We actually do have a couple parking spots in there.
Man, I know we've had a couple of applications going down that area that ultimately they've been doing it and then had to come back for a C P.
Right.
Remember, whoop, some of the, is there some other restrictions that she needs to be aware of in R1?
I mean, what she's asking to do is to operate a construction business primarily out of her home. And that is a conditional use in that zone, so.
And Willow, you do live in that home?
Yes. Yeah, we...
That's somebody that apparently didn't live in the home. Uh, commissioners, oh, sorry, go ahead, Willow.
Oh, sorry, I was wondering if that was a question for me? I didn't hear.
Uh, yeah, I was just gonna ask commissioners if they had any other questions or thoughts or concerns that you can express with, for Willow?
My, my only two kinda concerns are, one, that any environmental impacts, to make sure that those are addressed or mitigated appropriately. And then looking at screening, just to, you know, kind of protect the more wooded natural feel and, and make it not look industrial. Now, those are my two just things to think about.
That makes sense. Um, we, I can't think of any environmentally damaging things that we would be doing. Cause we're not really, we're not gonna be actually working here except for if we can do the mechanicking in the future, which that would all be done in the shop with a concrete slab and everything. We're not gonna be storing material. So it's literally gonna be pretty much parking things. And then to try to make it look good, like I said, this summer, we were gonna do the nice planters out there wooden and plant roses and bushes so that it kinda makes a homier feel.
Well, I know with the formal application, we'll need to see your site plan and landscaping plan. Probably something that shows there's protection for the fuel system.
Okay, so site plans?
Yeah, I'm sure that's one of the requirements. So it'll show current landscaping, anything new you're gonna put there for any kind of buffers for the neighbors.
Okay.
Also, something to keep in mind is hours of operation. You mentioned in the winter, that's obviously gonna be leaving early. So I don't know what can be done on the, limit the backup beepers for the neighbors.
Um... They're on toggle switches, Kay. Do you wanna come over here and introduce yourself? Um, Keegan said they're on toggle switches, so he actually shuts them off to pull out.
I normally shut them when I run at night and then when about, I don't know what time it is, seven or eight o'clock, I'll flip them on when it gets busy, just for the regular route or being here moving around.
And do you wanna tell them what you did for the fuel? You said you called.
Oh yeah, the fuel, what I did is I just asked the fueling company, cause we go through Cascade, Diamond Line Fuel, and I asked them what I needed. So I've done everything that the fuel company has told me as a regulation. And then I also bought all brand new tanks from them when I first started getting fuel.
So the tanks are out there in the same area where the, where you're talking about staging the equipment?
Um, they're already enclosed in a building, um, their own separate entity.
Okay.
Yeah, they've been there pretty much since we moved in from the beginning. I, I had to have that right away, just because we got a fuel truck. In the summer, we just have a slip tank in one of the pickups. We fuel that up and we take that to the, wherever the job may be to fuel them.
Yeah, with the site plan, we'll need to pretty much see how everything's laid out, where it's located, pretty much everything.
Okay.
Including where, where you're gonna be parking the equipment, how that lays out and make sure it fits.
Nice. Yeah, prob, probably the bigger equipment inside and the smaller equipment out back, so it's harder to see of the shop.
Alright, commissioners, any other questions? Alright, well, I think that's all we have for now, so if you continue working with staff, they should be able to help you with the formal application.
Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on to the consent agenda. There are multiple items that are extensions. And, um... One item that...
Well, there's a whole lot of stuff, I mean, there, there's a pretty big group that's already against this whole process and they've been in business for, probably over a year and they're an absolute mess. Equipment's out there all the time and you know, it's gonna grow. They're gonna be firing them up at 6:00 in the morning and go to work.
We'll have time for other comments or bring it, when, now that we had notifications.
But be careful, one thing, he, his vehicles are packed quite within four plate at the side of the road right now because of...
Really, it's, unfortunately, it's not, have a comment now, but we will have that, so definitely, definitely come back and let us know. Okay, on the consent agenda, there is one, one item that I have seen that I think we would pull off and have some further discussion on, which is the sign review, 2022 for the 501 Pine Street. I'd like to pull that one off with the consent, so we can have a little bit further discussion on that. Anybody have any questions on any of the other items, the extensions and I believe the lot combination on Appaloosa Trail? Alright.
I move. Hey, one moment sweetheart. I move to...
Yeah.
Willow, would you mind muting yourself for getting some background noise?
Well, your portion is done. You really don't need to hang out for the rest.
Okay, it wasn't clear. I didn't wanna interrupt. Thank you.
Okay. I move, do we have to move to remove the consent agenda, the 22, or can that be all part of this?
Yeah, I should make a motion to move S G 2202 to new business.
And then?
And then approve the rest of the consent agenda.
So I move to move S G 2202 to new business.
Second.
You have a motion to, and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Alright, motion's carried. With that, we will go to new business and...
We need to move to approve the consent.
The rest of the consent agenda.
Oh, I think you did that all in your...
It had to be separate as well.
You didn't, you didn't want to...
We need to approve the consent agenda.
Oh, okay, so, cool.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
All second.
Alright. Alright, you have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Alright, motion's carried. Now we will move on to new business. With that, we will take on sign, sign review, uh, 2022, or excuse me, 2202, 501 Pine Street. Since this is a sign review, do we have?
Picture of the sign?
Yeah, there's a couple that you don't find.
Uh, we should put that at the bottom of the agenda, cause it's Meredith's baby and she's not on yet.
Oh, okay. I was gonna say Meredith had a baby? Wow! She carried it well.
I'm sorry, it looked like that was gonna happen.
Oh, miracles.
I didn't remember seeing her look like that.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so, we'll move that to the last item on agenda, Meredith here. Okay, well, so then we'll go to, uh, design review for, uh, 2134 and scenic route, 2117, 209 South Third, for Builders First Choice. Jason, are you with us? Jason?
Okay.
This team here?
Yes, Jason's here.
There you go. Jason, you wanna, wanna go over your proposal?
Uh, I think Ryan Earnstow was gonna jump on if he's available.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Ryan Earnstow with Rocky Mountain Companies. I'm the architect on this. Which, uh, typically, I don't think architects usually get involved with, uh, regrading a fence, but, um, it's a scenic route, so we're, we're checking all the boxes. The description on this is, uh, I don't wanna say misleading, but it's, it's a bit of an overstatement. We're pretty much just regrading and putting a fence on. It's not really a for one development. The, the idea is that Builders First Source is, um, supplying a, a lot of construction in the area right now. And they, during the construction season, they need overflow storage for lumber, um, concrete, uh, baggage, you know, anything that can be part of the, the construction process, um, that is in high demand and they move a lot of volume of it. So, this property, which is due south of their current location, uh, would provide an opportunity for that expansion. And along with that goes a certain amount of improvement to the site, but, uh, ultimately it's, it's pretty minimal.
Alright, Brian, you wanna present?
Yeah, so as Ryan said, this is a fairly minimal application. That anytime we are creating a, there's a hole, it, we wanna make sure that drainage and stormwater management stuff is taken care of, uh, which they're working with the caring team. Sure that is done correctly. The, I showed the eight foot fence. Be lowered to 60. And, uh, a few other housekeeping items, but generally a pretty straightforward matter. They put substantial landscaping between the area and the pathway path that's there. So, all in all...
Brian, I'm sorry to interrupt, but there's a lot of paper shuffling next to one of the mics.
Thanks.
Gotta be me. Me a little bit too.
Do you want me to repeat anything, Liz?
No, I got the gist, but, uh, but it's much better now, thanks. Please keep going.
Thanks for that. Alright, well, yeah, with that, I will stand for any questions.
Is it just the eight foot? How much of it's been the eight, or the fence, or the six foot fence? Just the front or all the sides? I couldn't, uh, I know part one is coming down.
There, there will be a, a section of fence between the two properties that comes down to allow access between the, the two yards. Or, well, just across that property line into the yard. But then along the frontage in the south side, there would be the addition of the fence. Along the south, the, the fence would be held off 45 feet. There's currently a cross access agreement with the Best Western to the south of the, the property of 209. And, um, they've been using that for a bit of overflow storage with, um, you know, toy trailers essentially. And we would, we would continue allowing that access, um, within a specific area of that, um, property. But the, the yard itself would be enclosed. There's already, um, fencing on property that does not, uh, that does not belong to, to the owner, um, along the east and the north. So it would just be enclosing the rest of it.
Alright.
Is this, um, is this Mike Ferry's deal?
It is, and Mike is on.
I, I just wanna say that I know Mike Ferry. I haven't spoken to him about this issue or anything else in a, in a quite a, a long period of time, and I think that's his fault. But I just wanna put that in the, for the record, please.
Alright, thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant or Brian?
I maybe just have one. Was there any concern with, is the existing access thing exactly how it is? It almost looks like it's widening up a little bit.
That's just a, a bit of inconsistency with the, the aerial imagery. You know, it's a composite of a whole bunch of satellite pictures and then on top of that, uh, various agencies throw down, um, rough approximations of where property boundary lines are. So, um, we did our best to line up those images with, um, actual dimensioned property lines. Uh, the, the access point itself will not be touched at all. And when we resubmit our site plan, showing a couple of notations that were requested in the conditions of approval, we'll, we'll make sure and clarify those, that those lines and their line types are accurately reflected.
This is gonna be a, a store, overflow storage for the builder's supply, right?
Yes, uh, just within peak building season. Otherwise, it will sit as a slightly improved, um, but otherwise untouched lot throughout the winter. And between March and November, it will, it'll house, uh, building materials.
So this is a own piece of property by Mr. Ferry and, uh, maybe, maybe just Mr. Ferry that he's gonna lease to the builder's supply or?
Correct.
Is that how it comes together?
Correct.
I see, okay.
Any other questions?
My only question is, is, uh, is there been any, any other people that are, have shown interest in this piece of property or, there couldn't be any contamination involved with any materials that you're talking about here that would restrict the property in the future? Anything like that happening?
No, there, there would be no hazardous materials. This would be your typical, uh, building material storage. Like I said, lumber, uh, some joists, some, uh, some pavers, uh, the occasional, you know, sandbags or something. But, um, by and large, you know, inert, uh, not hazardous.
Alright, okay, alright, thank you. Alright, this is a public hearing, so it'll open us up to the public hearing. Anybody's on, call or on the line, you may have to unmute yourself or hit star six and it takes a few seconds. So, we don't have anybody here, here, so anybody online that would like to speak regarding this item? Again, check your mute or potentially hit star six if you're on the phone. Alright. Well, hearing that? Well, hearing that, I will close the public hearing. And commissioners, do you have any discussion? Thoughts, concerns? Pretty cut and dry. It's put in the fence and storage and building material.
Yeah, it seems to me it's just just kind of an enlarging of what Builders First is doing at that corner. Seems pretty straightforward to me.
Yeah, I I don't really see any reason for any restrictions on material because I don't think they really have any material that would be stored outside there. That would be hazardous form.
I really didn't really know what, all kinds of stuff they have there.
Yeah, but if you're gonna, yeah, for outside, there wouldn't be a whole lot that would be outside stuff that you would anything hazardous, paint, anything like that would be all inside. I don't believe they feel on site. If they did, I mean, they're not asking for anything like that, so I don't see any issues there. I think they've already done the landscaping that was required and they're working with the city and I believe the highway department transportation for the swale that's already kind of planned to go along there, so that's all in play. And they're not interfering with the pathway. So, unless anybody else has any concerns or questions, I'm open for a motion.
I make a motion that we approved DR 21-34 and 21-17 with no restrictions of this organization.
With the conditions of approval?
Yeah, with the conditions of approval. Thank you, Robert.
Second?
Alright, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, motion is carried. Thank you very much, Jason.
Thank you. There you go, Mike.
Thanks, guys.
Alright, now we move on to design review 2135, scenic route 2116, to be determined Paul Bunyan Road. We got Kevin McKee here for Douglas Manchester. Kevin, do we have you online?
Yes, yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hi, Kevin and commissioners. Just sorry to interrupt, but before we get down the road on this one, I noticed that this application and the following application were both identified as SR 2116. So, I just wanted to check if that was intentional or perhaps an oversight.
One of them is incorrect.
Any crowd number?
Uh, standby.
This is SR 2116, the next application. Shoreline application. One is SR, one is SH. They are correct. There we go.
Thank you for the clarification. Kevin, please continue.
Sure, do you want me just to talk about what the project is?
Yes, please.
It's a new single-family residence on an irregularly shaped lot that is right off of Highway 55, hence the requirement for the scenic design review. There is a private road already developed that goes through the property that connects 55 into Whitetail. And this is a single-family residence with a fairly large storage garage as a portion of the residential design. And we've just basically made it very simple, very simple shape and very simple materials to blend into the landscape and I think it fits in the environment fairly well.
Is this planned for, like, obviously, storage and just guest use?
It would essentially be a guest, a guest house or a caretaker house, that kind of a thing, yes. At present, it's just planned to be used by the owners as a secondary guest house or even for someone that was working for Mr. Manchester during the summers that he's there, that kind of thing. But it probably will not be a full year-round use house.
Brian, would you like to?
Yeah. One thing to note that to me was that I, in the findings of fact document, forgot to copy and paste from the staff report into this one. So, your motion should reflect the conditions of approval included in the staff report rather than the findings of fact and request me to amend that. But yeah, like you said, it's a oddly shaped lot with a big private road running through the middle of it. What we did is application the owner and architect. We had to make requests quite a few modifications because lot coverage includes that private road and some other things like that, and because it's such an oddly shaped lot. You'll notice that one site plan, the very first one in your packet, different from the rest, include, does not include the driveway to the rear of the property. That is the latest version, but the majority of the staff report is conditioned based on the previous plans.
Brian, I did have one question when I read through the report. It had the lot coverage ratio listed at twenty-nine percent rather than twenty percent. And I wasn't sure where the twenty-nine percent number came from because that would give me another four hundred square feet of potential house area.
I will check math again. We have a little chart in our zoning code that is hard to read. But I'll get you more specific numbers.
Okay, yeah. Either way, it's fine, but if it is, if there is a little bit more footage, because I in this revised design, I've had to shrink the building slightly. And it ends up, it ends up with dimensions that are not, you know, we would end up wasting materials to meet the square footage. So, if I can get it back to even two-foot dimensions, that would be great.
Cool. But yeah.
So, the one with the driveway that goes around the back is the
That will go away. The driveway around the back will go away.
This one is current with?
Yes, just the driveway in the front.
I wasn't, I wasn't understanding that I had to include the private road in my lot coverage ratio, so that's why I had to delete the back road.
Gotcha.
Okay.
But yeah, generally meets requirements with adjustments made on that site plan to meet setbacks and such. It's pretty traditional McCall architecture as far as roof shapes and things like that go. I think generally approval, and I will stand very much.
Is this a guest house or for individuals that are working on some of Mr. Manchester's property or?
It's his own, it's his own storage area, and he included the residential side to be a future guest house for either his friends or even possibly for someone who's working for him while he's there during the summers.
And his main house is in close proximity of this, then, I guess?
Yes, yes, it is on the Whitetail property itself.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Right, has there been discussion on the one south elevation that seems to have a lot of blank wall and looks like, what, double glass doors going in? Oh, yeah, the north as well, just a couple of windows on that one.
And also, I had a hard time finding the entrance.
Too, yeah. So, the main entrance rules don't apply to this parcel because it's R1 zone.
Don't apply?
Right, and that's only for R4 through R16.
Okay.
But yeah, if you guys find the elevations lacking with regard to blank walls and such, I would generally agree with that and encourage you to add additional windows or whatever you'd like.
That's the living quarters that's at, and Alright, commissioners online, any other questions at this point before we open up to a public hearing? Alright, and we'll open up this unit to the public hearing. Again, if anybody's online, unmute yourself or if you're on the phone, star six and give it a minute to unmute. So, anybody online would like to speak or on the phone? Going once, going twice? So, alright, hearing no comment, we will close the public hearing. And commissioners, like I said, one thing I see, I mean, that is main living quarters where that windows are on those ends. And that one end is gonna face the road, kind of coming in Paul Bunyan, so I I think kind of to be consistent with blank walls, we need to I'd like to see some more windows in there, at least a couple on each side of the main doors, I would think. Let's see, what's the dimensions on those?
Make it look a little more
Talking about
It's like this is the Kevin, is the width of that great room like thirty feet? I can't quite read it.
I believe it's thirty, about thirty-two feet, yes.
Okay. And so it doesn't show. Yeah, this, the south elevation will be going along that road.
Is north up on this?
Yes, north would be to the highway.
Okay.
I think both the north and the south elevation of the living space, but how does that work? Because that's gotta be part of the garage.
Is this a giant garage door here or this?
Yes. But the north elevation is all garage.
Just for a motorhome or something along those lines? Is that what that's for?
Motorhome and a boat, yes.
Okay.
It is a little
So, Robert, this facing the road right here with the three? As far as it, or this?
That would be facing
Oh, I see. This dimension is eight, this is eighty-three. Or fifty-three, or sixty-three? I can't read it.
Well, yeah, because you got the full length of garage and the building.
This is the face here, and then this is this long
Yes.
side here. Yeah. Yeah. I would like to see it look a little bit more.
Now, I'm still kind of confused. You say this is the side that faces the road right here or?
Well, that'd be facing
It was, we were talking about more of those or you?
That'd be facing north towards
I don't think
Wait a minute, south elevation.
Directions are labeled right.
Yeah, I don't get that either.
I think this is west. I think north is west.
Kevin?
I don't have a drawing to look at. Can you pull up?
Can you see what's on the screen?
Uh, no.
Yeah, if you got the
I'm looking at your sheet A5.0. The elevations on sheet A5.0.
Right.
The one that's labeled north, is that actually the west?
Where do you see a label north?
On the site plan?
No.
Or is
It's, it is the north elevation.
I get it.
So, that would show to me though, then, that there's a garage door facing Lake Street? Am I reading that right?
East elevation faces Lake Street or faces Highway 55.
It should be to the north of it.
So, east elevation faces Highway 55 then, right?
Right.
Highway 55 is the northeast property boundary. Kind of is a diamond
The kind of angle is why it's giving us, it is not just straight to the north.
Okay, so.
It's got a satellite.
No, I do, I apologize. I don't think I put a north arrow on the site.
Okay, so, east is on Lake Street. I'm just gonna write it east.
Yeah, yeah. For plan, plan north, the garage door faces Highway 55.
Got it, okay.
On the east, the east figure here then, right? This faces Highway 55.
That faces 55.
Okay.
This faces the southern property line.
Uh, okay.
This faces the Whitetail Drive.
Okay, there's a little bit of an angle there. Kind of more north than east.
It's probably skewed a little, right?
Yeah, can you see with the satellite? There's an angle, but it's still
Right.
like east.
The building itself is oriented generally north, south, east, west. The lot is cocked.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I think I'm situated.
Yeah, I apologize for that. I had forgotten all about the, that it wasn't true angles on my site plan.
No worries. Okay, so. What's this, what's the road?
Paul Bunyan.
This one to the rear?
Yeah. And the other one's Whitetail. And then, you see, there is one house to the lot that's sort of to the, whatever that is.
Kind of like, kind of like southeast?
Yeah.
Ish?
Southeast-ish?
Yeah, the southeast, okay. That's another property right there then, right?
Yeah, there's a house right there.
Yeah.
Okay, so, elevation from that direction is this one here, Paul Bunyan.
I think with the blank walls, how do we do that with the garage doors? Are they falling into blank wall with it?
Garage doors do count as blank walls. A frequent condition of approval to mitigate is windows.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, because these don't appear to have any windows in them. There's no current windows planned or at this point for the garage doors? Kevin?
For the garage doors themselves, I hadn't shown those, but I, if you guys want to add windows, just tell me where. I'm fine with that, absolutely.
Well, windows on the garage door would be nice. It wouldn't be a big design problem, I wouldn't think.
Yeah, you just order one.
Actually, I'm actually deleting one garage door, the, on the south elevation, so I'll put, I'll definitely just put a wall a bank of windows on that side. And I can add a couple of other windows on that elevation as well, although I feel like with the landscaping that the south elevation is gonna be pretty well covered in trees.
That was my general kind of review as I was looking at all of this, is it does seem a little more industrial than I'd like, but there is a lot of screening with the landscaping that I've seen from the drawings, so I agree, more windows is better, but also, you know, just taking a note for those trees and screening and stuff like that works for me.
Yeah, I think with the existing garage door, I'd like to see at least one of the panels be windows in that door. Now, it could be up high for security, but just something there to break it up a little bit.
That's a good idea. It gets natural light in there too, which I have been thinking about.
Yeah, and then, probably, I mean, obviously, if you're gonna take the other garage door out, some windows there, I would think at least two windows, one on each side of those other two windows that are on the on the north elevation and the south elevation, just to
Okay.
Make it look a little more residential and a little less
Yeah, because it's
It'll blend in with the other one.
Was originally applied for as a shop and realized couldn't do a shop, so.
It'd be nice if I looked a little more residential.
Do a little bit more modifications to it, that would help.
I like this side.
Yeah.
What is this side? The Paul Bunyan. I mean, that looks a little more residential to me from that angle, but that...
You're talking about the, talking about the west one then, right?
The west.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think that looks good.
Okay, so, we can make that a part of our conditions.
Yeah, so we do the extra windows, the garage window.
On both sides?
Need to, well, the other, yeah, wherever the garage, the garage door is being taken out, that to be windows.
What about the north elevation?
The north one would be one panel of windows.
Upper, the upper left here?
Yeah, yeah, you just have one of the panel, you know, one of the garage door panels is made with the windows into it.
And the building itself.
And two on each, or one on each side of that, is I'm thinking, what I'm thinking, if that, if you think that's enough.
Yeah.
I think that would break it up, because it is fairly screened and is close to the highway, so one thing about it with a home, you probably wouldn't see too many homes being built that close to the highway, just noise factor.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
And then, we had to remember that we need to make sure we have the correct finding the factor, conditions of approval.
App report.
Yeah. Anybody brave enough to make this?
Yeah.
What you can kinda help is your...
Let's all do it together.
I was writing down.
Oh.
So, your recommendation would be to, recommended motion would be to approve the DR twenty-one thirty-five and SR twenty-one thirty-six, with the conditions of approval as stated in the staff report. With additional conditions that they add windows in the garage door that is proposed to remain, replace the south garage door with a bank of windows, add two additional windows in the living quarters on the north elevation.
And the south.
And south.
And south. I think the south may be, I don't know, that's living quarters, but both north and south elevations on the other side then.
Right.
And I think it said twenty-one thirty-six, and it should be twenty-one sixteen.
Twenty-one sixteen, yeah.
I don't make motions.
So...
Okay.
I'll say we, I will so move what Ryan said in that one up for a second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Hey, the motion is carried.
Thank you, everyone, I'll, I'll continue to work with Brian.
Okay, great. Okay. Now, we're going down to design review, twenty-one forty-two, and shoreline, twenty, you got shoreline, twenty-one sixteen. Right, that shoreline, so you got shoreline, okay. Okay, uh, Brian? All right, we have Brian Nyhoff here for...
You've got Brian Nyhoff here, how's everyone doing?
Good, thank you. Let us know what you got going down there, that'd be great.
Sure, so, we've got a house, and we calculate, I'm just calculating square footage, which is at two thousand forty-three square foot. The project is obviously extremely modern, it's a two-story, what we're doing is we're off of the Payette River, so we're trying to get our, all our living space really on the second floor, so there's about fifteen hundred and sixty square foot on the second floor. Garages on the main, which are to the left and to the right, and really, on the main, what we do is we just come in, there's a bathroom down there, and then, there's a ton of patio space, as you can see off the back. So, really, the narrative would be, you show up, go through the main floor and go right out to the river in the back, or if you wanna say, hey, we wanna get to the bedrooms or kitchen, then you go through the main door, which is on the main floor, sorry, front door on the main, on the main, and then you go up the floating stairs to the second floor. And then, we're having some fun with some different colors, we've got some elements that are tall, so I'm throwing in a lot of glass for that. And then, we've got, what I'm doing and playing with is we would probably work with some recycled, it would look like recycled materials anyway, and that way, we've got kind of a container-looking aspects to it, as far as container home, and then, some rough siding that's going through, and then, some smooth elements as well, so... Like, for instance, instead of doing cluttered stone, you'll see at the front door, we're doing some cinder block. So, different look, different look than the last house that I was looking at, that I was like, yeah, that's definitely typical McCall, this one is like, no, this is, this is definitely more modern, but we've played with some different design ideas, we also wanna respect the height requirements, and so, this one is at twenty-six feet, ten inches. We'd like to be able to get up on the, on the roof, and so, to do a typical pitched roof for the client's desires, it doesn't really, it's not advantageous for this design, so we, we started going more with boxes. Last thing I would say is, instead of making it just boring boxes, like a, like a skyscraper, which is like true modern, I did a lot of recesses and pushed a few things out, but that does contribute to the calculation of square footage, because we've got a lot of covered porches, because we're pushing elements in, pushing elements out, and ultimately, doing that to make it look cool.
All right, Ryan, you have...
Uh, yeah, as he stated, it is pretty far outside the typical McCall architectural style, you know, whether that is acceptable, up to you guys, I generally think it can work. The color palette on it appears pretty bright on paper, so I requested that Brian send me some material samples, that I have here, for the virtual attendees, I brought some stuff that I can compare the red to. The reflector off my bicycle, kind of close. I'd say the closest thing I got was this red leather-bound book. It is much less bright red than the priority male striping that... That you guys would like.
Look at the...
And as I can say, it's tough too, because when I looked at the palette, what I did is I grabbed them from Lowe's, and you're in fluorescent light, so it is brighter in the fluorescents, so I went outside and, not in the shade, but said, hey, with natural light, what does this look like? And it's, it's a lot more of a, it's not pure burgundy, no, no, no doubt about that, but as far as bright red, we're not after bright red, what we're after is kinda like in the fall, you'd say, hey, you've got some trees that you've got, leaves that are bright red, we are trying to go less than that yet, but that way, you say, okay, we're, we're still arguably going with the natural color palette.
Uh, the metal on it, will that be like this?
You got it, yep.
And it, will it be that sort of matte, or will it be shiny shiny?
It'll be in between, yeah, so, in the renders, it almost, it, you can't figure it out, right? It's almost like, hey, is it aluminum, or is it not, but it's not a, an aluminum, it's gonna be painted, but as far as a gloss, we'll definitely put a gloss to it. And those elements, we want to actually balance those out a bit, so those will have a gloss to them, and then, the wood will be a lot more matted, and that way, we're putting, we're playing with the contrast, so, you bet, we're definitely embracing a, a modern look here.
On that rendering right there, I'm looking at the same picture here, is it darks on the top, is that just a function of the picture being printed on here? It kinda looks like it fades into the top part of the building, where the red comes out.
You're talking about the, the...
Yeah, yeah.
Man, I'm glad you guys are asking questions, see, now I'm not nervous, when I had to give the presentation, I was crazy nervous, now we're, now we're good, thank you for that, so, no, I'm actually, I'm actually doing that on purpose. So, most of it is going to be stained, as far as the wood, it's going to have, you see, there's two different woods, one is a bit rougher to the right, and that is gonna be a lot more three D, as far as that's gonna be a, a rough siding, and then, you can see the face of the fascia, that is going to be pretty much, we could almost call it like a bald, it's going to just get lacquer on it. Underneath, I am embracing that red, and so, we're going to, or the burgundy, and so, we're going to stain it a burgundy color.
So, it really isn't as red as it shows up here in the, in the picture then, all the way down, is that what you're saying, from the, where the, the red, red part of the glass is?
Yeah, so, the sample that you've got, take it outside in the, in the sun, and it will be, if you zoom in on the bottom right, and you'll see where, the software does pretty well, where it, it curves in, that's your color.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, we're, we're going darker than, than the renders, and I played with it, for some reason, I, I run a software called Lumion, but it was determined to get a bit brighter, and so, I finally said, hey, it looks cool, let's, let's send it, that's fine, as Brian requested, we'll just send you a couple samples to take a look at it. But yeah, it's gonna be stained red under, on the soffit.
One other question is, is this really not pertinent to what the, the actual whole design of the house is, but I look at the amount of windows on here, how, how energy efficient is that? Is that, I mean, is, are windows more efficient now than they used to be, that something like this is, is much more doable, as far as building codes are concerned and this type of thing? It has more windows than I've seen at a lot of houses, and a lot more than my house too, which...
Sure.
Is, is it, is it pretty energy efficient, and that's not really a make, a make or break thing on this, on decisions, but how is it?
You know, and so, that's where I would say, frankly, don't really know, I would leave that to the builder, however, that glass in the front is gonna be commercial glass, so we could almost ask the same question for, if you said, hey, if you go downtown Boise, or a mall, and you see all that commercial glass, right? So, you bet, you're paying a, a premium, but that's gonna be heavy, heavy duty, so that, that does, does become energy efficient. It's a great question though, but yeah, it's not gonna be your typical residential window, can't be, it's twenty-three feet, I think, nine inches from bottom to, to top, so, it, a typical application won't work.
Uh, Brian, are there any CCNRs or design guidelines in there, I know Mike Eckhart...
No.
Obsessed by those properties, but I wasn't sure if he included any, any design guidelines or anything in there.
I would say none that I'm aware of.
Okay.
That's the other question I had too, there's one other house on this particular area, right, in this small development down by the river, there's one other house that's built right now.
That's Mike Eckhart's.
Well, no, there's, isn't there another house down the road though, down, there's, I think there's one on the end down there, that the people, they were working on last summer, is that, maybe I'm wrong?
That one might've came off of Rivers Crossing.
Yeah, because Eckhart's house is down that... One at the end of the road.
There is one at the end of the road, okay.
Yeah.
How different is that house from this house, quite a bit?
Um, that one is a lot more your typical lodge, but they have also patios up on the second floor as well.
Okay.
So, I would say they're not, they're not holding to true, true McCall style either. Oh, it shows it right there, you've got it, that house is the one that's built, the one that's to the left of one seventeen.
We'd like to make sure we verify that there's no CCNRs, I thought he had some, but I can't remember for sure.
I thought, I heard he had some too.
His house is right there at the beginning, I can't imagine he would just do it, not have any, I mean, he might have, but no, he might not.
That is certainly a condition of approval you could place on it to...
Yeah.
Confirm.
Yeah, just to make sure you're not getting something going, and all of a sudden, there's something that sneaks up on you.
Sure.
I thought there were some, but I...
You know, and I'm, I'm saying no, but maybe there is something, but if there was, it must've been extremely minor, that's like, yeah, well, we'll be all right, but bottom line, we can't build it without meeting the HOA requirements of the subdivision, so gladly, we'll, we'll add that to the requirement.
Just in case.
Cause we won't, we won't build it without the HOA being happy with it.
Hey, Brian, this is Nathan Stewart, can I ask a question of the applicant?
Yes.
One of my questions is, it looks like you're creating some kind of garage off the south side.
Yes.
And I'm really concerned about the turning movements on how a vehicle could get in there without trespassing on the neighbor's property. And I'm also concerned about, you know, paving or something right up to the property line. It's typically something that's discouraged in the snow climate, so that you're not pushing snow onto the neighbor's property, and making sure drainage is properly managed there, so, do you have some leniency? I'm just trying to figure out how I'd get my F-150 in there.
Well, and I can speak to that, so, what I did, my, my rule is that with an F-150, and the client doesn't have an F-150, but we'll still play with the game that, let's say, the client sells it to someone who does have an F-150, right?
Or maybe not, maybe, maybe not an F-150, maybe it's a small, compact car garage, that's fine, I'm just, it looks really tight.
What we, so, what we've got, what I did with, what I do is I always say, hey, I can't have less than a twenty-five foot radius for my turn, for the big trucks, and I've actually been out measuring beforehand, having a, a big pickup truck with the crew gap, say, hey, what it, what works? Twenty-five foot radius works, you have about a twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-six, three and three-quarter, I think, is your smallest, so, they can make that turn, and we've been concerned about that, and always playing with that, cause as you can see, the lot wedges down, right? But as we push the house back, which would give us more radius, we then go to our fifty-foot line, which is, we gotta say fifty feet from the river, so, we're pushing up against that, not claiming that as our hardship, other than to say, we'd like to go back a little further, get a little bit more space, we can't do that, and so, what I did is I took the garage and actually threw it, that's why the garage is on an angle, so, because of it, they have a twenty-five foot radius, and then, snow is a good problem, as far as the question, hey, how do you solve that? If you look at the plant, we have it that the snow is actually being pushed and piled behind the drive, so, it won't go on, there'd be no reason to push it on the neighbor's property. But good question, that's a question we've been working with and wondering as well.
Yeah, and I, I haven't looked at the drainage report, and maybe Morgan has, or maybe you're planning on submitting that, but obviously, you're, you know, your grading of that area is gonna need to make sure you're not pushing runoff onto the neighbor's property.
And I'll write that down, we've got a engineer that's doing that.
Great.
We, we can say, hey, as far as drainage, we, of course, want it to be running forward and not onto the neighbors.
Yeah, I mean, I think you just have to think about the idea of, and I don't know, again, the HOA rules, but if someone were to put up a fence on the property line, how could you get in there and safely remove snow and not back into someone's fence?
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe that garage can only accommodate a compact car, I don't know.
Well, and I think too, the thing is, is that if you said, hey, if you have a big pickup truck, then you can park straight on.
Right.
You can see that to the, to the east, and so, that would be a perfect spot for your big truck, right? And then, you say, hey, you gotta, I've got a Honda Accord, I think the big truck will fit also in the truck, in the, sorry, in the garage to the west, but you, the easiest would be if you went and you looped it, and then, you parked on the right stall as opposed to the left, so, no, no argument, the left stall is gonna be tighter, and that's the one for your Honda Accord.
Okay.
But even the...
Well, that all sounds good, I think, when we get the drainage report, we'll just make sure that we're looking at that closely, so that we're covering our bases.
Yep.
Thank you.
Good question, that one, we've been dealing with for a while.
Condition of approval number two is do the driveway more than five feet off that property line there, so...
And, and so, I actually had a question on that condition of approval of moving the driveway five feet, and does that screw up this plan?
Well, the, so, we would go back to the prior conversation of you need twenty-five feet to make that turn, right? So, if you take five feet off the side, then they will not have that radius.
Right.
Just, just won't, and then, you could say, hey, we could, can we push the garage in, again, if the concern is, well, we want to be able to put a pickup truck in there, then the answer is, well, as we push the garage in, then no longer can you put a pickup truck in there, and so, that condition would end up having it, that now, we are parking vehicles outside, or without the condition, we could park them inside.
Property has adequate parking, without that... Property has adequate parking without that garage or the, uh, driveway in front of it. So it would not be creating a non-conforming parking use. That garage just went away entirely. Uh, but if they wanna have it and just have it for small little vehicles or whatever, that's up to them.
When you look at the, uh, the, this, go back to the last slide that I think you're on to there, Brian. When you, and you, you look at the property lines from the face of the house where you're, you're looking at the garage. I assume the property line stops where the, the darker green and the lighter green come together on the B west side of the house. I think it'd be west side. I'm not sure. Is that where the property line is right there?
So the one Brian is zooming in only shows the property line.
Okay.
Yep. You're also going just with, hey, how do we orient, orientate the house? Cause I think that's like, hey, is there a way to solve it another way? What we've got is since that, so the, McCall requires that, hey, you can measure from the, the, uh, the soffit of the roof and not from the, the peak, right? What we've got is that we've got a, not a covered area, but an area that we can stand up on top of on the east side. Therefore we must measure to the very top of railing. And because of that requirement, we must push the house down the plan 13 feet, eight inches, as opposed to the typical set foot, setback of eight feet. So we are already pushing past our eight foot to 13 foot eight, right? And so that's what's starting to crush the garage a bit on the west side. So then if we would take five feet off on that side as well, what we're doing is we're starting to make it very difficult to put a 2,000 square foot house um, on a, like a one acre lot. And the reason is, is it's wedge shape. It's, uh, it's got a wedge to it. So that's where it's, it's getting hard to conform with the, uh, the guidelines. Hence I threw the garage on an angle. And it's a lot to take in, isn't it? Cause it's a tricky lot. It's got that wedge to it. So it's like, hey, how do you put two different garages in there? The other is we're using that garage as support for the second floor. So to take that garage out, uh, makes it that we'd have this big empty space below the second floor. Um, and that will be hard to deal with as far as, uh, pipes in the winter freezing and breaking and that kind of thing.
All right, Brian, uh, this is the public hearing. So we're gonna move to a public hearing for this point. So we will go to the public hearing and anybody that's online may have to unmute themselves or if they're on the phone, uh, press star six. Start, excuse me, star six. Uh, so do we have any public that would like to make comments on this application? And check your mute or star six if you wanna talk, if you're on the phone.
Hi, yes. Can you hear me? This is Robert Copeland. I'm the, um, the resident on lot seven.
Okay, yeah, we can hear you, Robert. Um, feel free to make your comments. Uh, please keep it to three minutes or less and, uh, feel free to let us know your thoughts.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. I was late to the meeting. I didn't know when the meeting was. I got the notification to the mailer, but it had no address and no time and anything like that to even know when the hearing would be. I heard rumor that they're, they're proposing to move driveway. My driveway that I put in place already. The common drive that's in the easement.
Shall I comment to that?
Um, please. Well, normally we'll, normally we'll just have him, uh, have his time and then we can answer that afterwards.
Sure.
Okay, that was my, that was one of my questions. The second, yeah, the second question was I heard that they're putting up a fence as well. And then the third would be is, uh, the building type material. I don't know if that was covered. Is it gonna be a, a canister home? We're hearing rumors that, that, the, the, the house is gonna be a canister home as well. Those are my three questions that I had. And if I, if they were covered during the hearing, I apologize. I didn't know when it was. I couldn't
Container, okay.
Yeah, container.
Okay. Robert, I know since we, so, well, real quick, Robert, since we kinda interrupted you, could you restate kinda the first part of your comment regarding the driveway and you're saying there's an easement there?
Yeah, so there's a, there's, um, the first question was, are they proposing to move the driveway that's currently between lot seven, lot six and lot five, there's an easement, um, that's, that's a shared easement between those three properties. That's for the common drive easement. And that driveway is in place already. I, I paid to have it installed.
Okay, thank you.
That was my first question.
Okay, great. Yes. We'll get back with you on that. Um, is there any other public comment? Any, you may be muted or unmute yourself or star six. All right, hearing no others, we'll close the public hearing. And some items came up we should probably see on a lap app. So those last three lots, have some discussion with the commissioners.
So what is this lot? What is our lot? The one we're looking at?
It is, well, lot five.
This is five.
Starting from the, from the road back then, right?
Um, I don't
Six is to the south and seven is
So, okay, so there is the easement right along that border.
Yes. Yeah, okay.
All right, Brian, I think we kinda figured out where that easement is. If you wanna comment on that question.
Take the rest of the public hearing and then he'll rebut.
I did. Yeah, there was nobody else. So, yeah, I guess, Brian, if you wanna have a dress, oh, go back to that easement. Just a second, Ryan, wanna Okay, so the squiggly line, that's five, six, seven, right there, right?
Five, this is the subject property.
You got it.
Okay.
Right here.
Okay, and so the boundary line there is where there's an existing easement area.
And how wide is it?
Twenty foot ingress, egress and utility.
Goes down to the Is that, he said that's already installed, but is it 20 feet wide? It's not showing on any of the All right, Brian, if you can kinda help on this one, see that your answers are on that.
Well, I, uh, um, I've never, uh, had it that I have to do a rebuttal, but it's interesting, uh, to hear the word rumors. Cause, uh, I would say they're, they're rumors. So the first is, uh, I think what we're referring to is a container home. Uh, this is not a container home, won't be a container home. Uh, we are going to do some elements, uh, as we discussed, uh, initially that are going to have, uh, ribbed siding that's gonna go up and down. And, uh, we're gonna do gray and a burgundy. And so that's probably where the rumor came about. Uh, it's also modern architecture. So it's, uh, boxes rather than your conventional orthodox, uh, roof line. So it's not a container home. Container homes, uh, in the briefest, it, they don't work for the widths that we need and not for the look that we want. So it, it will never be a container home, promise on that. Uh, the shared drive, you can see this, uh, image, I think on the screen shows it well. Um, you've got the egress, which is on the west side and we're not touching it. The driveway is, uh, gonna go right through the, the middle of the client's property. We're not having any intention of touching that drive. And then if I wrote down, cause I think we had three, uh, the last was a fence and we have no intention of putting a fence up at all. The clients really like the, the look of the lot. Um, and, uh, there's a walking path in the back. So we're gonna, uh, as you can see from the drawing, put some landscape in the front, make it pleasant as you drive up. But otherwise, uh, we're just gonna put, uh, uh, a way for them to get to the garages and otherwise leave it pretty much alone. But I understand the, the concern of course, uh, but no, there's, there's no intention of moving the egress, uh, drive. It, it'd cost us money and not, not serve, uh, anyone's purpose.
Well, I see on your stormwater plat, pretty much right at that corner, south corner where it turns and goes back up toward the main driveway entrance, there's a containment pit. I don't know how that would line up if that other existing driveway easement goes down that boundary.
It looked just to the north when I was looking on that plat that Brian had up a minute ago.
Yeah, I guess, cause you can't tell the dimensions and how far away it is.
Where are you saying, where, where, where plus
That must be the same as the snow storage area?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I could speak to that as well, if you like.
Probably would've been good, yes.
I, I drew, this is a confession time. You guys can laugh about this. So I'm not an engineer. But, uh, I, at one time was a responsible person down here in Boise. So I drew this. So we have an engineer who is going to redraw it and draw it correctly. So yes, the containment pit, it, it, it's all, it, it will be different. And it'll be stamped by an engineer, licensed engineer. He, uh, everyone was sick and, uh, so we needed something to submit. And I said, I can submit something I think that will, uh, serve its purpose. But certainly we need an engineer involved. And so, uh, he actually reached out to Brian again today just to confirm that that was fine. So containment pit, it, it, it won't go there.
So Brian, this is Nathan Stewart, city engineer. Um, I think that's great to hear that. And what's important, I think, is that your drawings depict and identify the location of this driveway that Mr. Copeland's constructed on your subject parcel. Um, it, it would seem that it would make sense that the driveway for this property might intersect with that shared driveway. So there wouldn't be two driveways right next to each other. But in the sense that that may not be what your clients want, we just need to make sure that all of that's being taken into consideration. Especially when you have to deal with snow storage and those things. So we don't see that driveway on any of your plans. And so I think that's why it's a little confusing.
And, uh, we can smile about this too. I was up at the lot to inspect it. Uh, and I think there was, I don't know, maybe two feet of snow when I was there. So that's why we did not see the driveway. I've seen the egress, uh, but, uh, as far as driveway, no, it, uh, it was two feet under, under the snow.
Fair enough. Yep.
So you bet something might, might, uh, adjust and shift to do that.
Nathan, is that something that you guys would be covered during the design review or during like the actual stormwater report review? Will that, do we need to worry about having them submit an updated site plan, I guess, is my question at this phase? Or will that be covered down the road?
Um, so, you know, we're in a situation here where, um, the applicants requested that we move this forward. We've not provided final engineering approval. So, um, if that driveway is located on this property, um, Brian will have to have, Brian, um, our Brian will have to have, you know, revised lot coverage calculations and whatnot. But certainly the stormwater drainage report for this property will need to identify that. You know, if the Copeland shared driveway or the Copeland driveway is draining onto this property, you know, um, this, this owner is gonna wanna make sure that it's not causing a problem either. So I think what we're, what we're doing here is we're, you know, we're contemplating this um, with the best intentions that they'll be able to accomplish those goals. If, if during our engineering review, um, you know, they can't accomplish it, then of course they can't get engineering approval and they'll be back providing you a revised application. But I'm optimistic, what I see here doesn't look like any red flag. It's just, there's obviously a big missing piece of the information, which is a shared driveway going down that western, southern boundary.
And what is the lot coverage we have right now? I know it's in here, but, um, trying not to avoid
My god. A little under eight, seven iron square feet. I'm bad at mental math. The, uh, current lot coverage as proposed is 3762. The maximum for the lot is 4483.
3762. So would they consider that shared driveway as part of the lot coverage?
Yes.
All right. I, I think at this point, you know, from my perspective, we've, there's a few conditions. That one condition about, you know, um, moving the site or the driveway off the property line will help provide some additional green space. Um, so I, I'd like to see the, the applicant try to, you know, crack this with their engineer and hopefully we can make it happen.
All right, thanks, Nathan.
You bet.
All right, commissioners, I go discuss amongst the commissioners here. Ryan will let you know if we have any other questions, so.
Okay.
Commissioners, um, any additional questions from the commissioners, thoughts, concerns, questions?
Just one more clarification that when, with our first, our first condition of approval that requires that the applicant receive final engineering approval would cover all of the discussion we've just had regarding the driveway? Yes.
I would, yeah, I mean, I would recommend acquiring a revised site plan.
Yeah.
Identifying the location of existing shared driveway.
The site plan with the shared driveway and lot coverage.
And the revised engineering
Yeah.
Information, that'll be part of the revising hearing. Okay.
And then I really think, I mean, you can't have something right up next to the boundary like that and they try to plow snow. It's gonna go to the other side. It just can't scrape it off that way. You just, you'd have to angle that in and be just right. It's still gonna roll over. I mean, just
And you get a whole bunch of
No matter what your best effort, even a blower is gonna, some of it's gonna I think it's
What if, what if for landscape, they put, uh, some boulders or something on that, right on that property line, keeping it on their land? But that way that you, we would create something of a funnel that would push it out the back. Cause you'll see the plat shows that the snow does get pushed out the back.
I think we're talking more of not having the pavement right up there. So the five foot would probably allow for that. You just are hoping not to have five foot, I'm guessing.
Well, if it's five foot, guys, uh, we're gonna take the plan and probably chuck it in the trash. There's, I, I think they could get a snowmobile in there, uh, but, uh, I don't know about, uh, a car. Well, yeah, a, a, a mini car. I mean, like, again, like something like a Honda Civic or something, you could get in there. I suppose the pickup truck just goes in the main spots and, uh, you could do something like that. Sure.
I mean, it's five foot. This is four, five. That means
It is what it is in my opinion. That's what the requirements are.
Yeah.
It's what the lot was.
To begin with, yeah.
Uh, okay, revised site plan, identifying existing driveway. What else were we saying on that condition? Was there any more?
We already have the
Revised site plan.
Site plan, showing the shared driveway and lot coverage. calculation. That would still be coming in the engineering plan because that would affect it. But then again, if that five foot's coming off, he's gonna gain that, cause that won't be paid back. If the plan worked.
Is that in one condition or is that two conditions?
I think you can, as one condition.
Yeah, the five foot part or the other?
Five foot's already
Five foot was in the other.
Yeah.
Okay. Updated, uh,
We already talked about the colors. Oh, um, well, I'm sure they're gonna double check, but I would like to verify, obviously everything's good with, if there is any, which, if there's any CCNRs and/or design guidelines with the subdivision.
Yep.
Oh, right.
Surprised there isn't any. All right, commissioners, any other thoughts, concerns, questions?
My only other note was that outdoor staircase, I, I don't really think it falls into our purview. It just worries me.
Oh, yes.
Kinda looks like an accident waiting to happen.
I don't think we have anything that requires stairwells to be covered.
No, I mean, I'd work with the rooftop deck.
Brian, that
Concerned about this.
Is a concern. You'll have a lot to
Snow in the cage, but again, we don't really have any, you know, code requirements regarding that.
Oh, yeah. Um, oh, yeah.
Is it any, any, any material requirements for the steps? For outside steps like that?
Uh, I'm sure there's some building code, uh, items that I do not know.
Yeah, I don't think there's any specific for
It'll be made out of It'll be made out of steel. So that probably will, will do fine. What you'll see if you zoom in, I actually have a label stating that, uh, those, uh, we'll call it the cage, is going to, oh, too bad. But it says wood shader and then I have a label on one of the plans. It's probably not on this one, but it's, bottom, bottom line, we're gonna design it so you can pull those off in the winter.
Oh, and shovel the snow off the west side.
That's right.
The stairs are gonna be a nightmare.
Somebody's gonna have to go up.
Because that's just gonna be a place that, hey, it's just gonna build up. Now, some of that's not a problem because it's the, it's the deck sticking off the face of the house. But the heat from the house hitting that snow, that's definitely a spot where you could say, no, you could get water damage, you gotta be careful about that. So, no, that's been, uh, thought about for sure. And the client's aware of it too. I said, uh, you're gonna have to get a good shovel and, uh, get some exercise in when it first starts snowing, if you don't pull that, uh, pull those boards off.
Lot of, lot of exercise, yeah.
All right, Commissioners, any other thoughts? Any other questions? Are we ready to make a motion? I know somebody that has really good notes on one.
Your turn.
Okay, I'll do my best. I move to approve. We are twenty-one forty-two and S H twenty-one sixteen. With the additional conditions of approval that the applicant provide a revised site plan identifying the existing driveway with updated lot coverage calcs. And confirm that the home is in compliance with the subdivision CCNRs if there are any.
And design guidelines.
And design guidelines.
If any.
If any.
I'll second that. You have a motion and a second? Oh, we're gonna do a roll call, Ryan, or just?
I think doing the voiceover.
Okay, all in favor?
All right.
I.
All opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, Ryan, well, got some, a bit of work there for you and hopefully you can make it work.
Hey, greatly appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to design review twenty-one forty-three. To determine Flynn Lane, uh, Jessica Petty for twelve fifteen design. Uh, and, or for Mark and Lori, Russell, Jessica, are you right there?
Hi, yes, Jessica is here.
All right, if you'd like to share with us your proposal?
Absolutely, so I'm the architect of Mark and Lori's house. It's a single family home, two stories with a partial basement. Um, it's a large home. The idea behind it is it's a gathering place for their family, their grandchildren, everyone to come. So all the bedrooms kind of have the en suite, um, for extended stay, uh, so you don't get too tired of your family members. The, um, upper level is mainly office space, they work from home. So they have a great view of the ponderosa park right behind them. And, um, you know, we kind of kept with the modern mountain theme with kind of natural rustic materials. Um, we played with the roof lines, pop outs to create interest. There's a really neat little courtyard when you enter the house, um, between the connecting pieces with the house and the garage. And just lots of, you know, outdoor living space, patios and decks and, um, it's just kind of typical McCall home.
All right, Brian?
So this is a very large house, roughly eight thousand square feet. When you see how many garages and such. Um, it doesn't appear as large because of the mentioned basement and it's two stories that like undulate the roof lines and things like that pretty well and use a lot of planes on the roof lines and building. Generally meets the design guidelines. Uh, the one concern that I had with it that is in the conditions of approval is that the front door is not identifiable in any way and not meeting our, uh, standards. Alone, um, and so they should revise accordingly. Do that, but should revise.
All right.
Yeah, I'll stand for your questions.
Well, is that the door can be in the very back little nook corner?
Yeah.
Why am I not getting to this, is it way in the back?
Towards the back, yeah.
I think you're too far forward. You should be right close, because that's.
Even here.
It's like tucked behind the garage.
Okay, yeah. A lot of noise now. There you are.
There we are, thank you.
Okay, so it's tucked back nicely back in. All right, Commissioners, well, I think this is a public hearing. Well, have any questions for Brian real quick before we go to the public hearing? Okay, this is a public hearing and we'll open it up to the public. Uh, again, if you're online, um, if you're mute or if you're on the phone, press star six to unmute yourself there. If anybody'd like to speak, please let us know.
Hello?
Yes, hello.
Hi there, um, is it my turn to speak?
Yes, if you could speak or, uh, say your name and address, that would be great. Then you have about three minutes.
Sure, thank you. Uh, my name's Julie Clark, address nine three four Flynn Lane. And I had, um, just three questions. I don't know necessarily if they're under the purview of the design review board. Um, the first question had to do with, um, we can't see the, or have not had the ability to see the plans, but I was wondering if you could, uh, share the offset of how far this property is offset from the street, from Flynn Lane? Um, I'm assuming that the address is on Flynn, or the front entrance is on Flynn. Um, secondly, my question was, is there any, um, rule or provision that states, um, that this can only be used as a single family home? I know in the description, um, the architect described this as for a single family, using it for the, the pleasure of their own family. Um, um, obviously it's a, it's a very large residence. And so my concern is how large it is and that it might be used for some other purpose. And the third, um, point or question I have is are there any requirements, um, percentage wise or otherwise, uh, for putting such a large home on such a small parcel?
Okay, Julie, thank you for your comments. Uh, we'll continue the public hearing and I'll get back to some of those for you.
Okay, thanks.
Is there anybody else that would like to comment? Again, check your mute on your computer or if you're on the phone, star six. All right, uh, last call? All right, not hearing any other, we will close the public hearing. And I do believe we had one or two comments in addition that was.
Yeah, there were some written comments that I emailed you all. Um, if you have not reviewed them, um, I can read them for you, but I prefer if you just read them.
Yeah, I prefer to read them, just making sure everybody.
Yep.
Aware of that. Okay, um. I guess Jessica, do you, well, I guess first we can reply to some of those questions to help throw out a little bit. The offset, of course, I can't.
I know.
I have it all.
I need some glasses.
My eyes are getting worse by the hour here.
Uh, the back of the difference between the front property line and the front of the building is twenty-five feet, uh, which is greater than required. Um, as far as being single family only, um, it is proposed as a single family. Um, it's for the zoning code, there's the use chart that a lot, what is permitted and not permitted. Um, what's being alluded to is use as short-term rental, um, which, uh, given the current, uh, zoning code requirements for that, would be converted to a short-term rental with a business license. Uh, national occupancy would be, half side be advertised as nineteen or fewer. If they wanted to go above nineteen, which the house would obviously, um, host that many people, um, they would have to conditionally use for it. That is, uh, some code language that we are currently reviewing for improvements. Um, but as it currently stands, that's what.
I don't believe with that subdivision, they, that was that newer subdivision they did?
Uh, yes, this is.
They approved last year?
Yeah.
I don't think there was any restrictions on.
I don't believe so.
On vacation rentals, so. So I don't believe currently there's any restrictions for the vacation rentals. The offset twenty-five.
And the percent, the lot coverage percentage is, um, is there, the maximum for the lot is fifty-five hundred square feet. Um, and it is fifty-two fifteen. Again, because of the basement and second story design, it really does not have as large a footprint as it may.
Okay. That, um. Thing I was looking at, I believe must be the west boundary. It seems like a fair amount of, maybe a fair amount of windows, but also a fair amount of blank wall once again.
I was wondering, can you, can you zoom to the floor plan so we can see how long that actual wall is?
Oh, yeah, you don't do.
Uh, the one with the dimensions, so we can see the length of the building.
Fifty plus eleven, sixty-one plus thirty-six, ninety-seven feet?
Wow.
Um, yeah.
Solid math right there.
Well, the front of the living quarters to the far back living quarters, the garage is another thirty-three feet, so.
This is ninety-seven and this is another thirty-three across the garage.
Hundred and thirty feet from front to back.
This is almost seven bedrooms, six baths, I believe.
Lot of depth to it. How do those windows line up for? Stairwell. There's the bathroom.
Double car garage and then the motorhome strip, it looks like.
It just doesn't seem to line up.
The plan is minimal, it's just existing tree, essentially. It is not on scenic route or shoreline, so it's really not terribly required.
We're getting muted on them, not sure if that's here.
Everybody's muted? If you have comments and stuff, recommend them mute yourself.
Uh, Commissioners, you have any questions, thoughts, concerns?
The back part of the lot here, or the house is ninety-seven square, ninety-seven feet from start to finish on the. Seems like a long way. Wow.
The lot though, am I saying this ninety-six?
Yeah, the lot is very deep, half an acre and.
Just kind of curious on this, on the backside of, it looks like the garage, there's a stone, stone around the windows and then an awning, is that what that is? On the top, uh, left-hand picture? Looks like the only stone in the whole, the whole house. Unless I'm missing something. Were those two windows or double trees?
Yeah, so there's a pop out there, a stone, and then, um, to kind of tie it with the courtyard entryway at the front door, and we have the same stone used there also.
So that, is that sticking out of the side of the building, or the side of the garage there?
Yeah, it's a pop out, yeah.
When you say pop out, you mean it's out all the time or it's, can be out or?
It's, it's a permanent, uh, two-foot structural change in plane, yeah.
Okay, I got it.
I'm just looking at that west wall, sort of, higher west side of the house. It just seems like a, if it's a hundred and some feet, you got ten windows, five?
The middle picture right here?
Ten.
Right, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
Which one?
Well, if you're looking at this one, that would be your.
Oh, this one, the front?
This would be the west side.
Yeah, okay.
And if you look at the floor plan, you've got a bedroom bath, the stairs, maybe bedroom bath, and you kind of see where those windows are, but just seems like a lot of space. I can't quite get a good feel of what the rendition on here, how it would look. I think these windows. If you're looking at that, I think the windows that are shaded in gray are actually facing the front.
The ones right, right down the middle of the house there?
Well, I think those are the ones that are, they're tucked in that entryway.
Yeah, because if you look at that, they're tucked in entryway. So this whole wall doesn't have, these would be, uh, these, I think, face the main street, based on the picture, so you know.
No, they, they're still facing the same direction, but they are pushed way back in that little courtyard by the front door.
No, they look like they're facing south, if that's the case.
I would say south too.
Or is that, oh, I see what you're saying, that courtyard is not showing, I see it now. Yeah, I see it now, okay.
Between the garage and.
Yeah, okay, now I see it.
Between the two car garage there and the plant, okay.
So it's, it's not that wall, it's inset, it's, yeah, okay.
No, but this one is a bedroom.
Yeah.
This is just a bedroom.
But it's got the, it's got the windows off the front side, so nothing along that side. Jessica, any chance of a few more windows or so, I mean, on that east or west side?
Yeah, absolutely, I, I don't see any problems. I guess I'd either a few, you know, transfer windows in the junior suite or even some more in the stairwell. I think we could absolutely.
There's pretty long building without any windows and we try to avoid as much blank wall. Think it, because it is such a long, long home.
Sure, but I mean.
This, this area right here, is that what you're talking about, right there? More windows in that area or?
No, it's a set.
Oh, I see.
This, this dog.
Uh-huh.
Yes. They're down, isn't it?
Yeah, I see, or right along here then?
Yeah.
I get, okay.
Because you're gonna have neighboring houses along there on those other lots.
Yeah, that, that's, that's pretty blank.
And there are fairly narrow lots considering the depth of.
Right, yeah.
So, yeah, I'd like to, on the other side, it seems to have a good variety of windows.
Yes. Jessica, were you gonna say something more?
Oh, I was saying, kind of, kind of what you're saying, there, there will be houses there, but there, the trees are very dense over, along the sides of the house there. Um, so there, you won't see a lot of the house and with landscaping and stuff, but, um, if, if you would like to see more windows, we can, we can certainly add them.
Yeah, I think a couple more there.
I would, yeah.
I think I'd be okay without doing the garage panels unless somebody else really thinks that's needed. I don't know if it's.
Be the windows on the garage doors, you mean?
Yeah, I don't know if it's really.
There's so much variety in the roof lines.
Yeah, exactly, I don't think that's really, I think a couple of windows on that side would kind of take care of that.
This is like the last place that had to do was pretty blank, yeah, pretty bleak.
Any other, other? Any other, other thoughts, concerns, questions, or the commissioners?
I, I just wanted to address kind of the, the public concerns based on what we heard today and the, the emails, that it sounds like by the numbers, this, this house is totally conforming and just, some of the neighbors have some concerns about the size of the house. And I think they've done a really good job designing this to make the front, you know, facing impact very minimal, it doesn't look like a big house from the street line, and it really goes back, and so I think with, um, a reasonable amount, you know, trying to maintain the existing trees, adding landscaping as needed, creating the windows, uh, does give it a much more residential feel, and it doesn't feel like a, a massive house, like it, like the floor plan might suggest. That's what I got.
Yeah, I would agree, your first impressions on it certainly is not that big of a house, compared to some of the other ones we've seen that are at that square foot on the lake. And Tom, are you, are Tom on there? We have Tom?
Yeah, Tom.
Tom, any thoughts?
No, I, I would cover my thoughts, I just that the, uh, the concerns for the size and the massing and that meets, meets code, I, you know, it all looks fine to me, um, I, I could see you have a challenge considering construction, but, you know, that's something you'll have to be, uh, wary of with the neighbors and that, but, uh, yeah, for this, I think you've done a good job of minimizing how it looks from the street, and, um, yeah, especially with, with the volume of building that it is, so.
Yeah.
Big house.
All right, if we, if you have any other questions or comments, I'm open for a motion.
Brian, is there any, give me any ins and outs of this motion that we're talking about here? What, what needs to be, or is it just a motion that we approve the design review at this point in time?
Um, if you would like to add a condition, uh, including additional windows along the west elevation, um.
Okay, I think a motion we approve the design review for, uh, hang on here. Twenty-one thirty-three.
Forty-three.
Forty-three, with the addition of windows on the lo, the longest side, which is ninety-seven feet.
West side.
The west side, yeah, what's longest side, ninety-seven feet, more windows, and I think that was it.
Yeah.
Okay, there's my motion, rather, rather convoluted, but, yeah.
With the conditions of approval.
Yeah, with the, with the foot play.
Second?
Right.
Good?
We have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Opposed? Motion carried. Jessica, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
You get paid more if you have to make all these motions, didn't you?
Tom and Liz, you can make motions anytime out there, you're, you're still with us here.
Yeah. What's our deal with the, with the group out there?
I know, it's my first meeting, I'm getting up to speed.
All right, not a problem. Okay, so we'll still wait on sign street, or is she here to do, uh, or who wants to take it to the end? Okay, so we'll go to sign review, twenty-one forty-four, scenic route twenty-one twenty-one, two oh nine north third street, Kevin Beck with EVC McCall, Kevin, are you right there?
Yes, I am. Good evening, commissioners, thank you for the opportunity. I just want to give a brief history of, of our tenant and what we're wanting to bring to McCall, and I think it'll be exciting and, and very favorable to you as we go through this. Uh, our, our tenant and user for the site is actually Natural Grocers. Uh, you may have heard of them before, but they are a fairly national company that sells health products and, and healthy produce and meats and, and things of that nature. A little bit of history on, on Natural Grocers, is it all started back in nineteen fifty-five. Uh, Harold and, uh, Margaret and Philip Isley started the company back in nineteen fifty-five when they actually had some illness within their own family, and they decided to improve their own health and nutrition. They went around and started, uh, selling nutrition books and, uh, also giving samples of whole grain breads and, and products of that nature. From there, it's grown into over a hundred and sixty-two stores in twenty different states. Uh, so you can tell that, uh, their product and, and their business model is, is exciting and vibrant and continues to grow as we speak. Uh, as far as what they provide, it's all natural products, they have a hundred percent organic produce, uh, their meats are, uh, grown naturally, their, their cattle are, are free-range cattle, their eggs are free-range eggs. Uh, same with chickens, they are very selective in how, what they put in their stores and what they sell to their customers. Again, very nutritious and nutrition-oriented. In fact, a number of their stores, uh, do have on-staff nutritionists that provide classes, uh, for the customers and the community. Uh, they invite the community to participate in these classes and, and participate in their store. Uh, so with that, what we're planning is to take, uh, already a beautiful building that's been there for some time now that George and Bonnie Bertram had constructed, and basically continue selling food out of it. I know before it was the Pancake House and, and, uh, although a little bit of a different type of sales of food, uh, we want to convert this into a Natural Grocers use. Um, as far as the outside of the building, we do not plan to make a lot of adjustments or modifications to an already beautiful building. Same with the inside, other than changing for the needs of the, the, the products. Uh, the outside, the only changes that we're really planning to make are we want to add a handicap ramp in the front of the building. Uh, we want to relocate the handicap stalls to the front along in the parking area. Uh, we would do some minor improvements to the walkway between the parking lot and the handicap and front door access. We would also have a standard sliding, uh, automatic door as the main entrance there in the front of the building. Otherwise, all the glass, all of the dormers, everything else that you see, we do would like to keep as true to concurrent conditions as possible. As far as any other changes on the site, I know that throughout the years, there's been some discussion of, of disconnecting the stormwater flow that's operating currently, currently, excuse me. It, uh, currently goes across, or is gathered within storm alleys and then inlets, and then transferred across the street to the west and into an existing storm detention facility. Uh, we do want to disconnect that and in accordance with the city's requirements and needs, and do a hundred percent stormwater detention, retention, and infiltration on our site. Uh, so we do have a system that we're currently designing, uh, and working with engineering staff to complete, uh, that will go underneath the parking lot. Uh, and we hope to have that completed here in the next few weeks and, and resubmit it to the city as well. Uh, we are coordinating and working with Brian and his staff on all their comments, and there were six conditions of approval. Uh, really, the bottom two are, are pretty customary, the other four. Uh, we have continued to work with Brian since we got the comments to work through those items, and I believe those are very easy for us to accommodate along the way. So, uh, with that, I'll, I'll stand for any questions or comments, or open discussion.
All right, um, let Brian, his presentation?
As I said, it is from the exterior, largely going to look the same, they're adding, uh, sliding doors, um, handicap ramp, ADA ramp, um, expanding the parking lot, repaping it a little bit, uh, to make it a little bit easier to back in and out of, which is generally good. Um, and, yeah, like, we're working pretty closely with him already on, uh, the conditions of approval that were in the staff report. Um, the, uh, one thing that I wanted to mention that I did not get into the staff report in time, but kind of discovered, um, when you look at the floor plan with elevations, a lot of the windows adjacent to the parking lot are going to be covered by glass or by produce cases and things of that nature. Our code prohibits blank walls and walls that lack transparency on street facades of commercial buildings. Uh, this is the parking lot side, so it is not necessarily prohibited. Uh, we just want to bring that to your attention, uh, the ones on the west facade facing the street uh, will need to remain transparent, I would recommend adding a condition of approval to that, to state such. Um, and then we've received some public comment, uh, from surrounding property owners regarding our request for some sound barrier, whether it's landscaping or a fence or something along those lines. Um, here the loading dock, just to avoid the beeping trailers and things like that, um, which is a reasonable request and consistent with the, uh, code regarding commercial zones abutting residential zones. So again, I recommend a condition of approval, add that. Yeah, we are already working through a lot of the conditions that were brought up.
Just to clarify, you said the windows at the west, that's the third street side, will need to remain.
One drawing showing all the windows along the south side are still there, but saying they're all going to be, or most of them blocked. I mean, I can see the interior floor plan literally shows they're probably going to be blocked, so.
The plan from discussions with the applicant is that they'll put a blackout film or something on the interior side of the window, so the window will still be there, but it just won't.
This won't be able to see through, okay, so you'll still kind of have the architectural part of it, just not looking in.
Looking at it from the road, it'll, it'll look the same, but yeah, actually on the patio looking in, it's going to be kind of.
You can't just look in, I want to be able to look in to see, okay, I want this one, please.
And that was the west elevation that you were talking about blackening out to somewhere?
The south and west both have things up against the windows, the west one needs to remain transparent.
Transparent.
So.
Because that's the entryway right there, right?
All right. This is a public hearing, so I think we'll move to the public hearing. Uh, if there's anybody online, or again, on your phone that would like to speak, uh, please let us know. You have to unmute yourself online or star six on the phone. Anybody out there that'd like to speak? Again, either unmute yourself or star six if you're on the phone. Okay, not hearing any comments, we will close the public hearing. And commissioners, if you've got questions and concerns, thoughts?
Well, the one thing I like to say right off the bat is it's good to have a new, another grocery retailer coming into the city of McCall. I mean, we have, we have two great companies, Ridley's and Albertson's, but I think this is going to, is going to make things a little bit more competitive as far as what you're buying groceries, I know they're not a, a direct competitor with, uh, the mainline grocery that Albertson's and Ridley does, but I think it's a, it's a good addition to, to the city of McCall. The only other thing I was thinking about is the, is the, uh, the entryway going in and out, I just, I notice that's a little narrow from just driving in and out of there, but, uh, is that, is that going to change any? Uh, and there's rocks on obscuring probably some of the pavement level on the entryway and the exit way. Uh, is, is that going to be any different at all?
Kevin, I think you're muted.
Okay, I didn't know if you were wanting me to answer or Brian there, but, uh, yes, we'll be, uh, adjusting the entrance. It's, it's a little bit different than what's shown here on your display. Uh, in order to keep that first parking stall protected on the north side, we would bring that radius uh, more into, uh, the backside of that stall, kind of like the south side does. But yes, we, we plan to modify the entrance a little bit to make it accessible for a full-size, what we call a WB sixty-seven, but a semi-truck, tractor trailer, uh, to access, and then make it down through, through the parking stalls and into the back of the lot where they would unload. So there will be some modification, but, but not, uh, not total modification, I guess you'd say.
And there's some, also some buildings on the back of the property, too, that, although, what's the, what's the scenario with that? I know that one, one building was going to be, uh, I believe, um, what was it? A, a, a part of the, uh, the garbage, uh, containers and there, and there, is there two back there or just one?
There's three.
There's three?
There's actually a couple of other portables that are back in the backside. Uh, those have actually been sold by the previous owners, George and Bonnie, sold those, and so those will disappear. And then, yes, the one that's just on the backside of the retaining wall is planned to be re, repurposed as the traction closure. Uh, our architect did send over, uh, a sample drawing to Brian this morning, or this afternoon, I guess, so a little bit late, but we do plan to reuse that part for traction.
And there's enough room in the back for the semi to turn around, or if you pull in straight and then back to, to the, the loading dock and then turn around to go out, or how, how's that work in the back of it?
That's correct, uh, the, the truck would actually pull in straightforward, he'd probably try to loop a little bit around to the, the north and then back into the, the back portion, but then he would back into the dock, uh, and then he would be able to make the turn back out. We've run truck templates on this and, and have shown that that WB sixty-seven can make the turn. And one benefit, too, is that we don't have a lot of full-size semi-tractor trailers, uh, maybe one to two a week at most. Most of our deliveries are small box trucks, uh, smaller in nature, that have easy access to the property. Uh, so it'll just be those one or two big ones that can be accommodated, yes, or making.
Unless I got to interfere with the, with the existing parking that would be back in that part of the parking lot? Is there?
If, uh, yeah, as we know, all the truck drivers are, are really good at maneuvering through these things. And, uh, most of the time, they, they are. Um, and, but through the modeling, it, it does show that that truck is able to back in, uh, a little bit tied up against those parking stalls that are shown, kind of angling to the northeast. Uh, and then he can make the maneuver to turn back out and not affect those parking stalls.
Ryan, if you had some more discussion of any kind of buffer on that north boundary? Uh, that's where those trucks are going to be coming in and out and beeping or anything, about, uh, just a few trees I'm looking at, or?
Yeah, the north boundary is commercial, it's more of the, uh, side of the property that has more residential uses.
Okay. This really doesn't go all the way to the end of it.
Yeah, they, the site plans and landscape plans are generally cut off at the edge of the parking lot, continues on a good amount.
So I know in the past, there's, and you've mentioned it in here, and it didn't look like, I think you're okay with it, but there's not going to be the requirement to do sidewalks for that little section, or?
Uh, sidewalk is required, and we're working through, it's a final engineering approval, um, and it's shown on the plans.
There in here. I missed it.
Along the street front?
I'm looking at the conditions of approval.
Uh, but as it's already shown, uh, the.
Oh, so it'd be just in engineering, okay, it wouldn't be.
Yeah, we're working through ITD requirements and stuff.
Okay.
It's in right of way or.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw part of it there, but I didn't see it in the conditions of approval, so, unless there's anything changed on that, okay. They've already conditioned on the lighting, they don't have. So the, the loading dock, or, yeah, I guess the loading dock, the garage door, I saw that it's going to be replaced, but I'm assuming it's the same size, you're not enlarging it?
The loading dock, so, yes, the structure will not change in size, uh, and just so for your information as well, the way that our tenant, Natural Grocers, loads and unloads their, uh, produce and products is they actually use a forklift that drives out at grades, so there's nothing that's elevated or changed of grade, so the, the door itself will be, I believe, a nine-foot-high, uh, standard roll-up door.
Okay.
It's already in city code, right, that we can't, they can't let their light go over their property lines?
The area to the, to the right of the, of the loading dock door in the existing picture here, existing loading dock area, what, what is that, the dark area, is that a storage for, for cardboard, or to the, to the right-hand side? I see the bobcat in front, I'm looking at this picture right here. Might want to draw that up, Ryan, if you can.
Like a, like a walkway thing?
Well, it, it could, it could be a walkway, could be a, could be partial storage for cardboard, and then there was, there's something, looks like sticking out of the side of that, too, that goes out a little bit farther up to the edge of that property line. What, what is that there? Not having been back there before, or bothered to look when I, when I was. Um, the dark area, is that a, that's the garage door?
The dark area, I believe, is just an exterior storage area, that will be modified with our plan, uh, for interior storage. And off the backside, there is a diesel generator back there and a stairway that goes up to the second story.
Yeah, and they're getting, they're moving that out of there.
You're moving the diesel generator or?
I believe so, yes.
Oh. So that's gonna stay the same as it is right now then, right? Correct? Or?
They'll probably get rid of that little greenhouse and then switch out a door.
Yeah, switch out the door.
And leaves that open area.
Okay, so that's, oh, yeah. I, I, I'm, I see.
I've got a greenhouse thing mixed there, you know, so.
Typically, our back of the store will have the roll-up door as well as, uh, one pedestrian man door, so to speak, for the employees and for access in the back.
So is it employee parking kind of back there by the loading dock? That was the plan or?
That would be the intention, yes. More of your long-term parking.
Yeah.
Less favorable parking stalls.
I can yell at him to move if he need the truck.
Long walk with your groceries.
Yeah, so they won't be back there. You got that back. Not really changing a whole lot on the outside. I mean, other than some of the things, you're talking ITD already because of about the traffic. I would imagine he would hope to have as much traffic as the Pancake House had.
Different.
Different patterns, but.
Hey, different patterns, but hopefully the volume for him.
And yeah, they, we're, yeah, we're working with.
Oh, that, yeah.
Yeah, TIS is required for time engineering approval and we'll work through whatever conditions may come with that.
This is not really part of the application, but I know everybody's gonna ask, do you have an anticipated opening date? If all goes well? We're gonna get out.
As quickly as possible.
That was a good answer. Uh, commissioners, any other questions, thoughts, concerns?
So you, you mentioned ITD, I'm guessing, forgive me if this is in the, in the staff report for that. Will, will you be doing a traffic study?
Yes, they've come back here recently. It was a little bit, uh, late in the party here, but, uh, they did come back and require a TIS. So we are in process of tracking down a traffic engineer that's not busy for the next six months and, uh, getting that process started.
Okay. Yeah, and then I would, I would just mention, I, I think it was mentioned prior, but the letters that came in prior to this meeting seem to be focused on lighting and sound for the loading dock. And it looked like from your photo metrics that, um, you're putting light on that. Not light, I mean, that it's pretty dark. You don't have a lot of light wash into those northern neighborhoods. So it seems like your lighting plan should address those concerns.
Yeah, Tom, to kind of tack in on that, that, one of my big takeaways from the, the public written comments was about the noise and the potential of creating more of a sound barrier. And it sounds like with the way that this company does things with forklifts and stuff, you're not doing a lot of your big semi-truck kind of movements. Uh, but is there a potential to create more of a noise barrier or mitigate any concern from the, those members of the community?
Uh, that, this is the first time I've heard, uh, the comment, uh, so I have not had a chance to formulate a response. But just off the cuff here, uh, our intention is not to modify the existing tree growth that's back there. I think it's fairly, fairly well grown and, and over, uh, populated with trees back there already. So, but if there is a need for additional sound barrier, uh, if you're thinking of a, a privacy fence or something of that nature, uh, something we can certainly look into and, and consider. Uh, and as far as usage and, and additional noise, you know what? Again, our, large part of our deliveries are gonna be smaller box trucks with an occasional semi tractor trailer. I'm not exactly sure what the previous users, uh, had for deliveries, if they had larger trucks as well. But I wouldn't think that, um, deliveries would be much more noise-related than what the previous.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
Is there a cardboard baler involved with, with their, with the operation at all for?
Usually that's inside the building. Uh, they have that special equipment inside and typically are not, they do not store cardboard or trash of that, any sorts outside the property. It's all usually stored inside the building.
Any other questions, thoughts, concerns?
No, just maybe discuss a little bit if we wanted to require an additional sound barrier of some sort and what we might like to see if we do want to require that.
Do we have a picture of kind of that north end, or I guess the northeast end of the building that faces the, that's probably the good one right there. If you zoom out a little bit showing that right there. Okay, so that boundary line goes just above the building east-west. There is a little berm that goes up from the driveway right at the edge of the building, it looks like.
What is it? Is that a center block wall?
I can't remember if it's a wall. I mean, there's some type of, I can't remember.
Yeah, it, it looks like center block wall. It goes along that, on the north side of the building.
It's actually those stacked, uh, formed concrete, large blocks.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Not much of a barrier, is it?
I think you got the one house, cause that's Floyd Street up above it.
There were a couple neighbor, right? There were at least two that commented.
Yeah. Would it work to do something above that barrier, kind of the, going along there? Do you think something more on the boundary line?
There's usually a lot of noise in the back too, and that barrier isn't really a barrier. It almost looks like a retaining wall.
Well, yeah, it's a retaining wall, probably.
I think.
Something on top of that?
Or just beyond it.
Beyond it, yeah.
Whether they want it right on the wall or along the property line, as long as there's something between the two.
Yeah.
How far down?
How far down the, the side of the building on the north side?
Well, yeah, how far down the property line are you thinking?
If you're gonna have those trucks coming in, they're gonna.
Yeah.
Pretty much. At least up to where those existing little sheds were.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, where am I? I lost my spot.
Zoom in just a little bit. You can see that roof of the one house. It's the closest to the boundary line on the back corner of the property.
It goes all the way.
Yeah. I think that's a garage. Remember, right? Think the house is a good floor.
Where must you be looking at, Robert?
Right there, or that's.
Cool, right there.
Can't remember if that's a garage or not.
Oh, I don't remember either.
For reference, it is zoned, that whole north side is zoned commercial for.
Is zoned commercial? Okay, so it doesn't necessarily require the.
Right, yeah.
The fence or the buffering, cause it's commercial.
But those are existing houses right now.
It is a good neighborly thing to do.
Yeah.
Not required by.
Gotcha. I'd be inclined to go along the property line, I think.
Yeah, I would be too.
Just on that north property boundary?
At least from the back corner of the building?
Mm-hmm.
How much farther from the back corner of the building does that wall extend? Clear, clear to the end of the property line in the back part or where?
If, if they put one up?
Well, yeah, if, if, it, it goes to the side of the picture here, but there's, there's a way to the end of the property line.
You're talking that little wall?
Yeah.
I think it follows that angle.
Yeah, you can see right there, it just comes down.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah, so it's just a little ways.
Mm-hmm.
Different.
The propane tanks are up on top there, right behind what we're going to turn into the trash enclosure. So there's, there are a couple of tanks back there, I think thousand gallon tanks that are underground, but not.
There goes the additional delivery.
Trying to distract us.
But then there will be additional delivery with the propane. Not a whole lot, but it will. So, let me see.
If I may offer one thing with the propane tank, I know the previous user, you used a lot for cooking and things of that nature. We don't have an interior, uh, cooking facility, uh, so propane will primarily be for heating, uh, things like that.
And you may consider is to have the applicant conduct a sound test with a semi truck and forklift and mitigate to reasonable sound levels as needed and work with staff on that.
I love that idea.
Yeah, that sounds interesting.
Probably prior to certificate occupancy.
Okay.
Sounds good. Any other questions, thoughts, concerns? Or are we ready for a motion? Are you working on a motion or?
Kinda.
Missing overweight or? It's fine.
Okay. We, we, we were talking about the, the sound review and we were talking about the, the, the fence.
The window, we've got.
I got the, yeah, I got the window.
The fence, I think, got replaced with the sound review.
Sound review, okay, so I got the windows and I got, I got the sound review. And the driveway was, ITD was doing a study on that. Well, they were, they were gonna widen the driveway.
That's already in.
That's, okay, that's.
That's already in there, yeah. An approval.
Okay, so. So I'll make a motion that, um, we approve the design review for, um, DR 21 dash 44. And SR 21 dash 21, uh, contingent on the, uh, sound review for the back part of the parking lot and the, um, the other one was the, was the, um, windows, right?
The windows on the west need to remain transparent.
Yeah, the windows on the west, okay, the windows on the west need to remain transparent. That's what I got so far. Is that?
With all of the conditions of the, with all their, other conditions of approval being met.
I'm looking for a second.
Motion and a second? All in favor? All right. All opposed? All right, motion carried. Kevin, we look forward to seeing you open them.
Yeah.
In the future.
Thank you all.
Get back to us on, get back to us on opening day. That's such a very, it's a very good prep plan.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Okay. Now, we can go back to the sign review.
Meredith, uh, the cat's not doing great, so she's not gonna make it, so I'm gonna pretend I know what I've got now.
You can't do it. Okay, I gotta go back in the book here.
I found taking them out sounded like I wasn't looking so much.
Yeah, I did, I did, I did the same thing. I did a noise violation here.
Okay, um, everybody get to pack the drink. I'm gonna do sign review, uh, 2202 at 501 Pine Street. Um, we have Aline Bailey with us.
Actually, she's not, she's not with us. It's Cherie Reeves. I'm representative for Inglewood Volker.
All right, Cherie, if you wanna, a little different with her design review or sign review, we usually don't get to this point, but I guess we'll go ahead and have you present your thoughts and plans.
Well, at this time, I think that Meredith is wanting to, uh, or looking into doing a different color. And we had gone with a gray on the property and I think the, right now, the question is to keep the white. Where you see on the picture right here from the sign company where our logo will be. I think we're just pushing to, to stick with the white. We think it's fresh. Uh, I was, I'm not sure if you've seen our brand before, but we've been in many mountain towns and taken a lot of great properties that have a lot of character and some history to them and added a lot of value. And I think that our brand is a very classy and elegant brand and, um, we'd like to keep the white on that area, as you can see in, in this image. But, um, I don't know if you have any other questions on that.
So you, you said you were looking at different colors. Is it, is it the lettering that you're looking at different colors?
So we'd like to stick with the white, as you see on that image right there. We've got, the white and black are our colors and we've added the gray on the eaves and, um, underneath in the trim. But on that front piece that you see on the image there, we'd like to stay with the white with, as a brand on top of the white. We just feel like it's, it will, it's consistent with our brand. Um, it's very inviting. It's a refreshing, a refreshed look to a, a beautiful property that has a lot of character. So we'd like to stay with the white on that, that piece of the entry.
I think they painted it recently. This is the old Mount Monkey business, you know?
Oh, so it's white now?
I think.
It is partially. It, we approved an administrative, uh, paint facade change.
The whole building is white. Uh, we're gonna paint the whole building white. We have, uh, one other color as, as the city requested on, around the windows to be gray. But the whole white, the whole building will be, you know, a white.
Yeah, there's.
Yeah, I think if we go to the next page, it shows the projection with white, yeah.
Pretty bright. Yeah, then there's, yeah, gray trim inside. And then you have black doors. 3.407 prohibits harshly contrasting color schemes, uh, which, I just.
Partially, yeah.
Um, and so, yeah, staff's recommendation is to include a gray backer behind the lettering. That I think is the better route to go and call it that guideline.
So it, it was this color, but it's now this color?
It is now bad.
That, okay, yeah.
It is a process of transitioning to that general color scheme.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of the code. I just stay away from that.
We got a gray around the windows and in the front, um, the off-lake street, the entry there, we've added some gray around the windows there as well. And then on the eve and then the, on the trim as well. So I, I, we added that third color multiple places.
Yeah, I don't know. It would've been approved. It would've been such a dramatic.
This wouldn't have been.
Well, no, in a different, she's mentioned a different sign if there was other ones around, but I'm not aware of anything quite with those colors. So I don't think of it.
It's probably pretty hard to get them to not do.
White, white?
Or white backgrounds.
Yeah.
It, it, does, does the white match the white of the building though? Like, is it just gonna blend in with the building?
There's currently no backing proposed. It's just post-matted letters.
The letters on the white building.
Yeah. I'll be in the same color of the house.
Mm-hmm. Consistent with the rest of the house.
When you say approximately, it's a rendering, it's not.
Well, that would be the grayness, if we did the gray.
This is as proposed, that's.
Which one?
This is rendering.
That one.
The fading under the roof is making it appear grayer.
Oh, okay.
Rendering.
But it would be white.
The east face, so it's gonna get direct sunlight in the morning, be pretty bright white.
We did the gray underneath though, kind of beautying that a little bit and giving it some shade.
The bottom of that is gray?
Yeah.
I don't know if you've seen a lot of our other shops and our brand, we, that's kind of our, our colors, but we've always been able to pull it off really well, have had a great response. It's excited more of an inviting entry to all of our locations, we've kind of been consistent with that. With all the gray.
The west facing side. Directions are hard, so it's gonna be afternoon sunlight. Southwest.
Is it the street side or the lakeside?
Street side.
They would have a small one above on the street side. Assuming that would be his white too, even though it's a much smaller.
And this is the street side right here, right?
That would be the lakeside.
Well, this is a lakeside.
The lake street side, or well, whatever.
Let's call it lakeside.
Lakeside, yeah, get you all confused.
This, this would be the street side here then, right?
That's, that's.
The front, yeah.
Out front too, is it?
So you're looking at another sign in the, in the yard, it would be white with black and red.
Obviously, okay.
Boy, I think that would just really never, same with the code, I don't.
It's the reddest tree I've ever seen, wow.
The white building.
Do you avoid contrast by transitioning from white to gray to black?
Black.
Okay.
Line on, on the corner is replacing the sign that was there with, from the, the previous business with a new sign.
Pre-standing sign is existing and they're just replacing this.
Oh.
I swear if it goes against.
Pre-standing sign is white?
Yeah.
Poster, the poster are originally, were there before, we're just adding the additional sign to it.
And Michelle Grunville, who is the C E Director and the previous tenant of that building, is on the line if you have any questions for her.
Okay.
Hi, Michelle.
Yeah, Michelle, you got any comments?
Yeah, I have a little bit of history with this building, I, I just added in the chat only just for historical reference. I think the, the building owner or the, basically did some research and at some point converted it back to that forest green and white color, I think that was the original color of the house. And that's why that, that color was originally selected. And I think we've passed this on to our Historic Preservation Committee, I'm not sure if they contacted you guys about it at all.
I don't think. I may, but again, Meredith.
Oh, that's right, fortunately we don't have Meredith here, didn't know if they'd contacted her on this one.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, and then just my, my only other question is, is the whole building getting painted or is it just your portion of the building, because I know it's connected to Mountain Java?
Just our portion.
Okay, so then the rest of it will remain green?
They have the green on the, as you're looking at this image right here, you'll have the green on the right with the white trim and then ours with the gray and white building, the black door.
I'm concerned if we go with something that's against the code or slightly against the code, then it's gonna be okay if you did that one. And it's a minimal color change, I mean, it's a more of a gray than the white, it won't be as contrasting as much.
And the part of, against the code is what, or?
The contrasting colors.
Okay, okay, the white and the gray?
Well, the white and the black.
Right, oh, oh, I see, okay.
Because this one's showing, that's showing more gray than it is gonna be more of a white-ish, I guess. And I just would be concerned and, okay, we opened that and then it's just like, okay, we, if you allow those contrasting colors, you can allow these other contrasting colors. And if we have that in our code, that we.
Yes.
Are not supposed to have them, it's hard to. Where's that in here?
You know, we recently, we, we purchased a property, my partner and I, TJ here, on, on Reedy, 1911 House on Reedy, if you're familiar with it, going to the golf course. But it's, you know, a beautiful older home, we painted it white recently and got some great response from the neighborhood and the community. Everybody seems to love this house, it has a lot of history, but, so, you know, I'm, I'm excited to have that as well on that, on this property too, just I think it's such a quaint property that I think it's a refresh having it those white colors, inviting colors.
Do we have any input from, from Bill, from like the legal side of, of what creating a precedent would look like here and how much we need to worry about it?
Hi Commissioners, this is Bill Punkinney, I am City Attorney's Office and also represent the zoning commission. Can you, can you clarify your questions?
Yeah, I think the commission is worried that, you know, if we approve one thing that isn't 100% in compliance with code, that that opens the door for other people to say, well, you did it for these guys, so now you have to do it for us. So I was just wondering about the risk of, you know, building a precedent here if we approve the proposed signage.
Yeah, that's certainly in our, could be made and you're gonna run into that in the future likely.
In my opinion, I don't think you want to do that, but.
Yeah, I'm a little concerned, I mean, you've had it there for a while and we.
I see your concern too, and, yeah.
Yeah, unfortunately in this image, you can't really tell whenever you, as you're walking up to the property, the gray underneath the trim on the eaves, it, you can see it pretty clearly, so it does have that. And around the windows, it's unfortunate, you just can't tell in this picture as well as in person, but it's just the front entry. The gray, you know, there is a contrast between the gray on the top and then around the windows, there is definitely, you know, a contrast in that regard, the lettering of course is there, and then the darker doors, so it's not, it's not too stark, it's, you know, unfortunately, you just can't tell in this picture how much that pop on the top on the windows.
Still gonna kind of be the black on white. Maybe there's some gray up there, but it's, I don't know, I just, I don't know.
I think in this image off the lake, the street, you've got to see a little more how the gray is very, more predominant, especially unfortunately where the bushes are right now is where it is gray as well, so it's hard to see that additional color there with this image, this is just a rendering.
It's hard to make some mess, because.
Yeah, it's probably get jumped out as much as it could. Yeah, this is exactly what it's gonna be looking like, I mean, it's hard.
Is it gonna be brighter, like is the brightness or?
The lighting's kind of off, off lighting too, it doesn't look, it's sun, sun shining on it directly. If that's gonna make any difference.
So it looks like the, the staff suggested condition of approval is to submit a revised sign utilizing a gray background. Maybe we want to tweak that to submit a revised design that highlights, you know, the grays or whatever as, you know, envisioned.
But if we still have the white background, it's.
Yeah.
That's the main thing with ordinance is the background with the harshness directly.
Yeah.
Reflecting the letter to the background.
Are we, you're speaking to the sign on the ground or are you still speaking to the, the building itself?
The sign.
Maybe we could do the, with the sign on the ground, maybe we could do the posts in a different color and the sign, keeping the sign white and consistent with our brand.
That might, that still is the background is the main thing that we're talking about.
Yeah.
And if it's not as bright white, it's still, I know it's not exact, but.
Are we just splitting hairs here, or, I wonder?
I mean, it sounds like the basis of their brand is inconsistent with the whole city code.
Yeah. Well, we necessarily can't change that for brands.
No, it's not really our, our forte.
You know, when I look at this sign and the building and the concept that's been given there, just in general, I mean, I don't know about the code, but it just doesn't smack to me as being real obnoxious. You know, which I think is probably what the code is designed to, to lead us to, I guess. You know, it's not like a red robin or, you know, some chain, you know, retail space, it seems to me like it's pretty simple and straightforward, that just, that's my two cents on it.
Well, I appreciate that, Tom, you know, with a lot of the buildings that we have done in other locations and, and being our brand, we always try to keep it that clean, crisp, kind of inviting look, like I said before, and just a classy and elegant with simplicity is what we're trying to achieve with this and, and just keeping the integrity of the character of the building and, and the location as well. So I, I agree with you on that, but that's why we have such subtle colors in that regard.
Oh, yeah, two different ones that are two different totally looking signs, so one is gray.
Yeah, and one is white.
So that one doesn't jump out, but apparently that's not the color.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you get a better idea of the contrast. That would be, then we have exactly what we're gonna be looking at instead of something that's gonna, I mean, it won't have the grayness of the eaves, but.
Do you want to table this issue and, and contingent on the actual chips is what the colors are gonna be?
Because you have in Rocky Mountain signs make the sign, correct?
Absolutely.
So that hole underneath the eve, is that all part of a sign or is it just those letters going on part of the building that the building painted?
Just the letters, the building will be white with the graves and then our lettering on top of that. Jim will be the one that's creating that, all of it for us at Rocky Mountain signs.
So I think seeing exactly what color that's gonna be is making a difference, because that and that are two different elements.
Plus the gray maybe might be nice.
Yeah, gray looks. And I'm sorry, Tom, as you're, of course, you know, but we're kind of comparing the signs in the book, that one is more gray background and one is very white background. So I think it might make sense to see the actual color of the background, to see just how much it contrasts.
Are you, are, are we speaking the difference between the gable end and the, and the eve end signs?
I think we're speaking about the white and maybe even the trim, kind of like how the, one of the applicants sent these in, it was really nice, when we had concerns about the red, it was really nice to be able to see, okay, well, what is that red actually? And where the pictures aren't so clear.
It was quite a, yeah, there was quite a difference in those.
Seeing the same thing, to be able to actually see the paint chips.
There was quite a difference in what the actual pictures look like in those paint chips too, so it was pretty glaring difference.
Maybe with that too, we'd have.
Commissioners, this is Bill Punkinney again, if I can add something.
Yeah, Bill.
Yeah, so I've been looking through the code here. Specifically in 3.4.07 of my code, there's a prohibition on design standards. And in particular, and I just, and the reason I'm pointing you to this is because I think this gives you your standard for decision. And the prohibition is partially contrasted color combination, brilliant, since the day glow colors are prohibited on exterior finishes. So if you find that this sign violates standard, then you would not approve it, or you, you would require changes that would not, in your opinion, violate those standards. So I think that's the measure of your decision, hopefully that's helpful to you, and if you have any questions, please let me know.
I think what is a little bit unclear for us is that in one of the pictures, it doesn't really look brilliant, and in the other one, it does look pretty brilliant. Am I?
Yeah, yeah, I agree. Yeah, it's totally different.
And the rendering, I think it's probably what you're seeing, it may not be clear, but maybe we should submit a different image or, since we've already painted, you know, some of it, maybe give you some paint swatches and also see, take an image of what it looks like now, would that, would that help?
I think so.
I think it would help us to be able to tell whether, like how bright we're talking, how, how much contrast, if it's the, if it meets that code, if it's brilliant or if it's.
It's something they can look at now.
You can, yeah, we, you can see it now, actually, we just did a front entry a couple days ago before the carnival. But you can see it now, if you were to go to the building, you can see the gray and underneath and, and the contrast there, but if you, you would like, necessarily submit an, an image or a picture, we can.
And once again, if we had the paint chips or maybe a letter to be able to, or something that's, can actually see. And we technically can't go to them buildings without a meeting.
We're not officially allowed to go there.
I'm ready.
Take a whole public meeting out of it.
We could admit we're colorblind.
Just as a late night footnote, I take that as a win, that comment, I take it as a win, thank you.
I think if we had some paint color or swatches, not swatches, but samples with a letter change, we should probably have letters there, they're gonna be made out of the same material, I wouldn't think, or could make, be able to really tell the difference for sure. Because we just, it's just too many difference, too big a differences between the two examples.
Great, well, I'm sure we, they'll be happy to provide you with whatever you need.
As far as.
So it is not a public hearing, so you don't need to motion to continue to donate specific, but you can, or you can motion to table it, and you provided plenty of direction for staff and applicants to work with, and we can bring it up at the next meeting.
Okay. So motion to table?
Yeah.
Yep. So the next meeting?
We don't have the, hold on.
Part first.
SG 2202.
Yeah.
I move to table sign application SG 2202.
To the March meeting?
Until the March meeting.
Continue the.
Continue to the March meeting.
I second that.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. And we got one more sign. It's already approved. Just looking at it. Mountain dog.
I think this one's already up.
It's already up?
That'll happen.
In order anyway.
This is not gonna be easy to go through now, that's for sure. This is already approved?
Already approved, or the, was, I think, Details or something along the lines of the dog grooming business on Roosevelt.
Where 624 used to be, right in there?
Oh, really?
Here Alpine Playhouse?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, hanging over the door sign, conventional letters. Yeah, this one's already approved.
For your information only.
We had the solar.
Oh, right.
Mary Beth has been working with a group called Solar to streamline and enhance our solar panel permitting process. It included a pretty thorough review of our zoning code with regard to solar panels. Uh, there's not a whole lot of stuff in it right now. There's some suggestions for improvements that we will consider for future code amendments. Uh, we're also looking at our building code and seeing where we can streamline permitting and ensure that it's still like accounting for trees and snow loads and things like that.
An angle of the roof, right, so it sheds and where, if it sheds.
Yep. So there's also just an.
So then, once those, that process and recommendations, then it comes through us and then goes.
Yeah, it's most likely gonna back in the form of a climate, environmental code amendment package with other matters that.
I know it's kind of talking, but certainly like to see something more talked about because of the latitude of 45, you know, parallel, I should say, not latitude, parallel, name of the sun, how that goes with that, because I know, like Hotel McCall that had some there along their pool building, every winter, built up, six foot of snow on them, they crushed them.
Yeah.
David changed them three or four times and finally gave up and tore them out. So you really got to look at angles and where that sun's going to be, because it wasn't getting enough sun or angle to, even once you had six foot of snow and ice, it just crushed them.
So it wasn't even enough angle when they, you first put them in to get the right amount of.
Well, it was just the roof, so it had to be under the roof at that roof angle, so I don't know if they could have built them up any different or not, no.
With the city of Llano projection like that up and down?
Yeah, I, I mean, it depends on the building specifics and how it's going to affect the aesthetics of it, especially on commercial projects like Hotel McCall. I think things like that, and a lot of the newer ones I know will have, whether they keep up or not is a different matter, but at least helps.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so much updated information here because his didn't work. But like fog lifters, they were fine because they got a pretty good angle to them, so never see a problem with those, but they have much deeper angle and they've really got to watch those angles.
That's now on their own.
Right.
All right, well, I think, is there anything else we need?
Uh, that is all we got.
All right, everything, if there's anything, I will take a motion to adjourn. Oh, sorry, Tom, do you have something?
No, I'm good to share yet. We've got something to say, to say. I'll most give them.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn.
Uh, I make most of we adjourn the meeting?
I think somebody did.
He did.
Somebody, okay.
You can do a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
All right, you're done, thank you very much, everybody.
I gotta ask, I gotta ask Brian a question here.